We're back in open session. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for being present with us. We did go into executive session to cover items fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four. Oh, let's see. No, no, I'm sorry. It's a fifty-five through fifty-eight. No action was taken in executive session. Yeah, counsel, do you have anything to, to respond regarding any of the items?
Well, I think that for item fifty-five, I'd like to make a motion to direct legal to continue the negotiations, prepare the agreement, and bring back to counsel for approval.
Okay, there's a motion by Mayor Protan to prepare the document based on the discussions had in executive session, and it's been seconded by Councilmember Nelly Delma. Discussion. Unheard, all those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
That's aye. Any opposed? Unseen, unheard. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Going. Yeah, do we have any other matter? Yes, go ahead.
Yes, I have one.
Yes, go ahead, please.
Please, Mr. Mike, just a little bit executive.
Okay, we need a, yes.
So for item fifty, for item, for item fifty-six, I'd like to make a motion that we direct legal to continue with the pilot suit.
Second. As suggested, we can continue this discussion in executive session. Correct. Second, I have a member, Rudy Gonzalez. That's heard. Aye. Any opposed? That's the end of your question.
Mayor, for item fifty-seven, I guess, can we have counsel, but outgut, I guess, indulges in this one?
The understanding was that for counsel, uh, may, I remember, to see the, uh, based on the discussion had in executive session. I don't mind. You know, actually.
No action.
Okay.
All right, that's it. We have to go back to I didn't read it. Okay, we're going back, uh, back to report item fifty. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, I was at mood here, but, but there was no action required on, on fifty-seven or fifty-eight. Is that correct? Yes. Right, so, so now going back to fifty-three. Go ahead, please. Motion to bring back staff reports. Uh, fifty-two and fifty-three? I'm sorry, fifty-three, fifty-four. Okay, yeah, as presented by, uh, Councilmember Rudy Gonzalez and seconded by Councilmember Nelly Delma. Bring back fifty, fifty-three, fifty-four. Discussion. All those in favor say aye. That's aye. Any opposed? That's aye. Unseen, unheard. The motion carries unanimously. Item fifty-three is on the table, go ahead.
Here.
May I ask Mr. Torres a question real quick? So, you're gonna bring the items up? So, should we bring any items for planning to
finances?
To finances?
Yeah, we made a motion there to, uh, to accommodate, uh, along with that staff report. Item, uh, C-one, um, which is, uh, very familiar to that, the half that carried out of the preparation for the discount on taxes. Um, and then the other item that I think, I think, uh, overlinks with, uh, the financial impact of the situation were underwhelming, but for now, I request to command a review of those staff reports.
Yeah, maybe also minus wealth as it appears with financial. A-one. And the function of A-one. And that one as well.
And F-one.
As amended, discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Also by saying, um, heard, again, uh, motion carries unanimously.
I don't think I was saying, wait a minute. Yeah, was it? Okay.
Good evening.
Welcome, ma'am.
For the record, good evening. In front of you, this is this presentation, which will also be shown on screen. Staff has been working very hard in putting these numbers together. We're still working hard at it. But I wanted to first tell you where we are. On March thirteenth, uh, City Council approved a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for us to be able to spend towards COVID-19 expenses. Not knowing the magnitude of what's developed to date, um, it's as a four-ten, four-two, I'm sorry, we've spent close to a million dollars. Uh, we expect, for example, uh, for the first week, we had payroll of four hundred and two thousand, overtime of twen- almost twenty-five thousand, and materials and supplies, of which part of it used, uh, the rest is remaining is under fifty thousand dollars. A little while ago, we spent an additional thirteen thousand dollars on additional masks and PPE equipment that we need. So, um, we are at a million dollars already. The city will continue to seek all funding available, including FEMA, for which our overtime and a lot of our contractual expenses will be reimbursed at seventy-five percent. We've learned that regular personnel expenses at this time are not reimbursable, but overtime will be reimbursed. Things could always change. So, we started looking, um, on page three, if you all want to go to that one. We've looked at potential, let's look at general fund, for example, right now. We've looked at our revenues and we've been looking at our expenses.
How about?
For property taxes. We have minimal impact right now because we know that, uh, most of the people have already paid their, their taxes as of February. And bridge. Keep in mind that whatever bridge makes in total, whether revenue or expenses, fifty percent of the impact is to general fund. We're estimating in total that the short, uh, revenue down, uh, shortfall will be anywhere from six point eight to eleven million dollars. What it means to general fund, three point four million, or maybe up to five point five. And we did several scenarios of how long would this last up to, and we went all the way up to the fiscal year, up to, um, September thirtieth. We said, okay, what if these last two months, uh, August and September, you know, we start to keep back up? Then we took a full approach of saying worst-case scenario, seventy-five percent in some areas of reduction in, in, um, pedestrian and sixty percent in, in non-commercial traffic. So, I'm giving you the best case scenario, worst-case scenario. Municipal court, uh, one point five million to two million dollar shortfall. Amusement device, one point four to one point eight. Again, it's all the way up to September thirtieth, and then all the other general fund, uh, revenues. So, we're looking at right now because it's a living, breathing document. Anywhere from twelve point eight million up to sixteen million dollar shortfall in revenues only in general fund. I'm not talking about any other department, any other fund. This is just general fund alone.
Ms. Torres. Because
If, if also we can amend it clearer to these projections, as, as Ms. Torres pointed out, they're throughout the extended twenty of the
Up to September thirtieth.
That's correct, correct.
This is fiscal year. This is what we're looking at, where we're gonna end up. Now, because there's revenues that we, we know that there can be shortfalls, we've also looked at some things that we have implemented and we want to, we want to implement on others. For example, we immediately went into no travel for any department. For general fund, we're freezing off travel. That's a savings of four hundred thousand dollars. We've already implemented that. No new hires, basically hiring freeze, including our regular employees and seasonal employees. In general fund will have an impact of about two point five million dollars instead, six. That was already implemented. Then we looked at canceling of paving projects. That is, I'm sorry, uh, one, one up, reduction to operational expenses. So, we have personnel already in line. There's no reduction there, especially because the largest majority is police and fire. That's who we currently need onboard. So, um, we've looked at all our other materials and supplies and cutting their budgets by fifteen percent. That doesn't give us a lot, but it gives us something. That's three hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. That's plenty to implement, and that's something that we're working for the department's freedom to tell us where, which ones it will put, but that was coming. We want to be able to cancel the paving project. Okay? So, in particular, we, we had money from bridge coming into CIS. This is a hard one to swallow, but if you're looking at it, it's three million dollars right now that we could utilize. And I'm just gonna go through it. Let us again eat it up, and then, and then we'll decide. Okay, so, we've had the fortune of having a good, healthy fund balance. Right now, our fund balance in general fund is twenty-eight percent. This particular one, um, if we were to reduce it down to twenty percent, that means we will, we'll be able to utilize ten million dollars from our fund balance to be able to cover some, some of those revenue losses in general fund. If we decide to go all the way down to fifteen percent, okay, and that, that is per charter that, that we must remain, then we have an additional nineteen. That is not the recommendation right now. The recommendation is, if anything, potentially go up to the twenty percent, which would give us a ten million dollar usage of reserves in fund balance to be able to use towards those revenues. And I think everything's too early to tell because we don't know how long this is going to last and what impacts it will have. So, we continue to monitor, monitor that. We looked at overtime deferral. Basically, we're paying our employees overtime. And that's something that for non-FEMA employees, th- this is not for police and fire, but for those people who, who aren't involved with COVID-19, we're stopping the overtime and we're thinking that if there has to be some type of overtime, then we'll stop that and pay, and, and put it into a comp time. Basically differing. There's not a lot of money there. It's about seventy thousand dollars, but nevertheless, we looked at that. Then we did no additional hiring of temp employees. And there's still be some exceptions because there's some exceptions to COVID-19 that we'll have to hire additional nurses or, uh, people at the health department. So, we're still analyzing that. That number we still don't have to use, so it's pending. We're analyzing any salary adjustments, and then we're also reviewing salaries because we're thinking, um, one of the questions was, well, should we reduce employee salaries? No, we're not going there. I'm just saying we're analyzing because we don't know. We're preparing for it. So, we have numbers for that, too. So, um, there's another thing that, that because of the Department of Labor, they're looking at implementing for, for employees to stay at home for twelve weeks, if there's under certain criteria. And D O L is saying that you can pay them seventy-five percent of their actual pay if they do qualify and be able to stay at home. That's something that we're analyzing. If employees do wish to stay home because of, for example, they don't have any childcare, or they have a sick patient, or they fall into a certain criteria, pay them twenty-five percent of their salary. Again, we're still analyzing that, and that is pending. Seventy-five percent, I'm sorry. But right now, just with what you have on, on that middle column, um, we're looking at about sixteen point three million dollars in savings that we may be able to realize to offset all our expenses, expenses.
Let me ask you this. Based on that number, can we recoup, we realize their savings, but can we, we were forced to undertake this, this, as well, like, can we get some, some monies?
Only for overtime and the materials and supplies related to COVID.
Which would be very good.
Which will be in the very second page that we talked about, close to, but, but not million dollars because
But not in the savings from the six, sixteen million, we, you know, we can't get a certain amount. I know it's a savings, but, but we were forced, you know, to, to, to save, I guess, because of the, uh, situation, can, can we apply some of the FEMA?
Only in certain scenarios.
Okay, well, that's fine.
For example, overtime, if it's specifically for COVID-19. Materials and supplies, if it's specifically for COVID-19. So, we go back to page number two. This is the first two weeks of pay, uh, the first payroll. So, we're still paying another payroll, which is coming up, and we won't have official numbers till Wednesday. So, for overtime right now, we'll be able to recoup, uh, seventy-five percent of the twenty-five, one of twenty-five thousand dollars. Materials and supplies, a half a million, we'll be able to recoup seventy-five percent of that so far. That's right now.
Ms. Torres, can you explain to the council how, which map we use to base potential loss revenue? Like, what percentage of loss revenue at the bridge that we use? Or sales tax do we use to get these numbers?
So, it, it depends on best and worst-case scenarios. For example, pedestrians, we went up to seventy-five percent worst-case scenario, seventy-five percent in loss of activity and revenue. For non-commercial, we went with sixty percent on the worst-case scenarios. And on the non-commercial side, we went up to ten percent because you're, we're starting to see the numbers starting to go down. That's what we use on worst-case scenario. For sales tax, we went, sales tax, we went, um, so, of our entire sales tax, sixty percent is retail. And out of those sixty percent in retail, I believe we used, um, sixty-five percent.
Yes.
Okay, so, if then if we go to page number five on the presentation, there's other ones, and we still continue to see and analyze. And I just wanted to give you an update on these. On the sports, on the sales tax for the transit, which, originally?
Um, if I may, um, I'd like to make a motion to bring up item C-one, which is under Councilmember Roberto Bali. He's requesting that we bring it up and that we get on the floor for a couple of seconds.
Okay. Okay, there's a motion presented by Mayor Protan, seconded by Councilmember Rudy. Will tell us to bring up, uh, C-one?
Yes.
Discussion. Unheard, all those in favor would say aye. That's aye. And, uh, those again, it's also by saying, uh, unheard, the motion carries.
And we could recognize Councilmember Bali.
Yes, Councilmember Bali, go ahead, please.
Uh, yes, Mayor, the, the item that I have is related to, uh, the presentation that's being made. That's why I wanted to, to, uh, bring it up. And what, um, what I'm requesting is, uh, is that we fund fifty thousand for Bethany House. Last week when we funded some of the, the different organizations that provide food, we did not, uh, provide for Bethany House. And Bethany House, uh, just by way of information, uh, they not only, uh, people think of them as simply a homeless shelter. It's one of the functions that they, that they do serve. Also take, uh, food, uh, to families. Uh, they also house, uh, families. They also house forty families there at their, at their, uh, facility. Uh, and, uh, they, uh, also have the, the, uh, food kitchen, which right now they're closed, but instead they're delivering, they're delivering food. And so, even though some of the food that they, uh, acquire, they do acquire from the, um, from the food banks. The food banks actually charges them. So, they, they purchase food from the, from the food bank and, and so by, by funding Bethany House with fifty thousand dollars, we will get them through the next three months, uh, where, you know, they're renewing to, to, uh, provide their services. So, I make a motion to fund Bethany House in the amount of fifty thousand dollars for
Mayor, if I may be recognized?
Yeah, yeah, but there's a motion, a motion made by Councilmember Bali, that was seconded by, uh, by Councilmember Martinez. Uh, yeah, the way of discussion, I think the last time when you made those motions, uh, you conditioned it. Mayor Protan on, on, uh, keeping
Right, so, I, I, I want to also add that right, so, um, for, you know, documentation purposes, same procedure we did for the food bank, that it be, um, to purchase food. Um, in their case, Bethany, I guess we can also incorporate for housing expenses, and they, they are housing families there, but for housing and food, um, not for operations, restricted to, to food and housing, and that they provide documentation for that. Now, Councilor Bali is mentioning that fifty thousand would cover three months. The other organizations made a request for the month of April because of our order extending up to April thirtieth. I don't know if that'd be an issue. Mister City Manager, the fifty thousand for a month of three period, uh, for a period of three months outside the emergency declaration would avoid us getting that reimbursement? Or if we could break the fifty thousand dollars up into three months, and as we go, we give them the rest of the money, Councilmember Bali, but I'm just thinking right now ahead for reimbursement purposes, if the fifty thousand covers a period outside the emergency order, then we might not be able to get the seventy-five percent on the fifty thousand, but rather just on a smaller portion. And to support Councilmember Bali's item today, we were downtown, and I was with some staff members, and it was sad to see the line of homeless people lining up outside Bethany House, and all they were getting was a sandwich with a thin slice of ham or bologna. That was it, with a cup of coffee. And, you know, um, this item that Councilor Bali brought up, you know, brought that in, you know, it's, they're not even getting a full meal because of the circumstances going through. It was just two pieces of bread with a thin pushed, uh, piece of ham, I don't know what it was, and a cup this size of coffee or juice or something. So, they obviously need the assistance, but I'm just gonna reword your motion, Councilmember Bali, to ensure that we do get the maximum, um, refund on this.
Well, of course, the reason for the backup information is, is so that we can present that to FEMA.
So, I, I will, so
Please go ahead, Councilman.
And what I'm saying is that I anticipate that, that the emergency order may be extended. So, since this is a three-month, uh, this would be three, uh, month, uh, pay for the fifty thousand, then what I, uh, would say is that we prorate it over three months and, uh, that it's contingent on any emergency order that, that, that we have. So, in other words, if, if we get into, at this point, we've been into this a month. Uh, so, you know, they need, they need that, that money. So, we're already a month into this, almost, not quite. But as we get into the second month, uh, they will receive those funds. And if we get into the third month, they will receive those funds or a proration thereof. We anticipate that we are not going to, uh, complete the third month, for example, then, uh, we would, we would prorate it to a portion of the fifty thousand dollars. In other words, the fifty thousand are in three separate payments, starting from the date that, uh, we made our emergency order, original emergency order, and for three months thereafter.
Okay, and, and you're in agreement also that they would have to provide documentation, correct?
Uh, uh, yes, that is part of the, uh, the motion incorporated.
Mayor, as a point of order
Seconded as well? Yes. Seconded, yes.
Mayor, as a point of order, when we were discussing all this, I understand what Councilor Bali is trying to do and accomplish, but I think that to be consistent with all organizations, Mr. Reed, it would be the month of April, one-third, the month of May, another third, and the month of June, another third, um, of the fifty thousand dollars for assistance. Or could we retro this the way Councilmember Bali is, is asking for?
As to retro, uh, that would be, I don't know if that's something that we can do, uh, because of FEMA reimbursement. But as what I understand with Councilmember Bali's requesting is to do that, to pay, uh, month-to-month, up to, uh, three months. If the emergency lasts longer, then we cease. Uh, I mean, I'm saying, uh, shorter, but then we cease. Uh, but I, I guess, the greater question that you're probably asking is if we're gonna be doing the same for all the organizations, and I just, we, we wouldn't, but for, at least for this one, if we can agree that we would only, I think, every month, month-to-month, as the order is in place, we, we, we could definitely facilitate.
No, I, I think that, um, we, we're not discussing, Mayor, I may be recognized, we're not discussing assistance for anybody else. If we just concentrate on Bethany, but what I'm trying to say is, if I understand correctly, accordingly, of wrong, um, Councilor Bali, but he's saying, let's give them one-third now because there's already, we're already going into one month from March to, let's say, this week of April. Another third for the remainder of, of probably April to the first week of May, and the last, uh, third of the portion for the month of May. And what I'm saying is, when we discuss this for the other organizations, it was April first to April thirtieth is one month because we can't go back to March, um, and they had to spend for reimbursement purposes, and then May is considered another month, and then June would be another month. So, they get thirty-three percent of fifty thousand now for the month of April, thirty-three percent of the fifty thousand for the month of May. And then if this extends to June, they'd get the remainder thirty-three percent for the month of June. And I think that's how it would work based on the discussions we had had, you know, regarding FEMA reimbursements and
As Councilmember Bali, you agree with that?
Well, I I think that we could, we could go retroactive because we do have an emergency order in place, and their funds have been, have been depleted because of this, as, as just, uh, um, you know, evidenced by Councilmember Torres's, uh, today, hi- his, uh, trip to Bethany House and seeing how they're, they're lacking now in, in resources and how they, they've exhausted all the resources, when before they would have had, uh, they would have been feeding people more food. Right now, they're, they're down to, to, to bare bones because of the stress that this has put on their budget. And so, I think, I, I, I would feel, I mean, I'd like to hear from, from legal or management, I would feel that we could go back retroactively because we do have an emergency order in place.
Roberto, would, would you just consider giving them the fifty thousand and let them utilize and purchase the food they need for X amount of time? And we, we, we forget about, about retro. Let's just give them fifty thousand, like every other organization, um, one-time payment, and let them purchase what they have to purchase and do their internal stuff, you know? Let's just go for fifty thousand, like every other organization, and provide us with the backup, and that's it.
I, I think so.
Let's, let's, or any of that.
Okay, man, that's, that's legal, okay? Okay.
Yeah, but as long as they can
Roberto, please respond.
As long as they can provide the, the, the backup, that's right. So, I'll, I'll amend the motion. The motion will be to provide Bethany with fifty thousand dollars in, uh, in, in assistance, uh, provided that they can, uh, provide the, the needed backup.
Okay.
I amend mine.
As amended by, uh, Mark Martinez. Thank you.
Not operations, just for food and
Yeah, and, and of course, no operations, food and health. And I Let's speak for her. Okay, all those in favor there? By sign, uh, any opposed also by sign, unseen, motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Yes?
I'm, I'm sorry. Could you begin again? Your audio was, was not, sorry. Can you just start off with the slide from the top?
So, we'll start on page number five. So, again, these are areas of concern. We're still evaluating all others. We're looking at transit sales tax. Our shortfall is estimated to be anywhere between one point seven and two million dollars. The sales tax for the sports venue, anywhere from one point eight to two point one million. Fast operations, anywhere from two point five to three point one. This is not to include the federal, uh, funding that we are trying to obtain through the care grant. So, I, I'm just giving you as it stands now. Parking meters close to a million dollars. Hotel motel, for, for, anywhere from two to two and a half million dollars. Utilities, ten to fifteen million dollars, but this includes water, sewer, salt waste, environmental. That's the entire bill. Because we have seen a delinquency already coming up, anywhere from ten to fifteen percent in delinquency. And even though we do have electronic payment, uh, plans, people are still not utilizing it. And so, we will have to do something to encourage the payment plan, uh, through, through, on, online, or on the phone.
I ask you a question now?
Yes, sir.
Utilities, uh, so is this because of the interruption? You know, obviously, it's, it's old, we're not forgiving it, are we?
We're not forgiving it. All we are doing at this point is waiving the late fees. It has not been collected. By now, we would have been able to say, we've collected so much more, and we have not. And we're seeing that collections is not there.
Okay, thank you.
A question that was asked, and, and I'm just gonna be in summary, is, uh, and one of the items was, what are departments doing operationally? For example, at the airport, well, there are many, many flights. We were having eight, seven to eight flights a day. They've been reduced to sometimes only up to three flights per day. Some staff, not all of them, some staff is working out of the home remotely. Some staff, not all of them, some staff is working out of the home remotely, we do have VPN connections. We have rotations for security maintenance and the custodial, but nevertheless, they're still operating. Our building department, for inspections, everything is requested online now. We, we're doing about a hundred and thirty to a hundred and fifty inspections daily. And by the way, all this that we're doing is also with distance precautions and masks and gloves, et cetera, employees out there. For plan reviews, we're reviewing plans electronically. Contracting through email or phone also, we're contacting, um, different people. Our zoning officers are working directly with police department on violation issues. Our one-stop shop is, we're, we're moving towards digital submission. But this process is still a little bit slow, and we're trying to get it going. That's one area that we really need to work on. For planning, lots of middles by appointment, but they're dropped off in a drop box. Or they're sent through a Google Drive or electronically. All meetings at the planning department are done through WebEx or on the phone. Applications are also being submitted electronically. Our parks, they're on rotation schedules. Some are at our call centers and others are doing A shifts and B shifts. And they're going in like fifteen minutes and clocking in separately, so that they won't come, come within each other's, um, distance. Solid waste, it's always, it's currently, it's business as usual. Um, schedules, as, as, you know, everything is, is currently the way, the way it's operating. Library is a department that I'm really impressed with, they've gotten very creative. They're physically cur- uh, closed, but they're doing curbside, uh, drop-off and pickup of books. They're doing many online services, including programs. They're doing child hours of, uh, book reading. ESL coming online soon, they're doing their knitting online, they're doing storytelling, so they're doing, they're being very creative as far as their librarians are all still currently there. For tax utility payments and others related, they're on rotations. All services on, at the annex currently are available only by telephone or online. The annex has closed its doors, with the exception of the drive-through. City Hall remains open for payments, and as you'll see, we do keep that distancing, uh, guideline. Most of our admin staff is on rotation basis. Whether they, they're off one day, but then the next day they come to work. And also, wherever possible, we are working through VPN out of the home. Environments, uh, environmental services, there is admin daily, stormwater and people who are beautiful are on rotation. And all divisions are currently operational. It's supposed to say that, um, our key police and fire, one hundred percent, uh, they work.
So, a- at a certain point, I mean, we're, we're obviously deep in the conversation now, operationally as well. And so as we move forward, even operationally, just here at City Hall and other departments too, we're trying to walk the fine line of still providing necessary services while trying to keep people home, because , uh, people, um, you know, while we try to, uh, have people understand as well, that if we do have employees who are at home, that's right now, they, they either provide services over the phone, through their, their, uh, computer systems. Um, but if nothing else, they are being paid to stay there. And this is not, I know they're, they're not sitting home on vacation. And so there's a, uh, there's a, there's a current mandate right now with all city employees, that if you are at home, you are actually being required to maintain at home. And so we're taking that a step further, and that's, that's where, you know, even the current issues that we're having, uh, with our, with this virus, is, is calling into even some, some operational questions that we have today. And so as this is happening, more and more restrictions are gonna be put in place, more and more people are gonna be sent home to stop the spread. So I, 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 I know, uh, there's been a lot of conversation where we can be assisting and helping in other locations where, let's say, uh, staff that, who is not physically at work, that are at home. We don't want to make them available somewhere else, that defeats exactly the purpose of what we're trying to do, is maintain people at home. We're gonna still use as much operational force that, as we can to provide necessary services. But once we're, we're talking about food, shelter, those sort of basic needs, medical, those are things I think all of our, uh, employees should be, uh, ready to go and help with. Outside of that, though, we, we really are trying to lessen the amount of people who are on the streets. Lessen the amount of people who are in buildings, lessen the, the contact, uh, as much as possible, so you'll see more and more, uh, services start to, uh, collapse, or start to bring down, just like we did with the city annex. That was a no-brainer for us to say, you know what, we can do everything online, let's stop accepting people from coming in. That interaction with people either, you know, congregating outside of our offices, or, or anywhere in the buildings, we can do without having those doors open. So we're gonna be taking those, those active approaches. And I'll tell you, obviously, if we have a, 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 a different, more heightened mandate that we need to follow, then we'll be the first to, to, to apply those triggers, because we have a workforce of almost three thousand that we're very concerned about, their families, their friends, their neighbors too. So we're trying to be respectful of, of maintaining those individuals at home. While people not misunderstanding that, that they're at home doing nothing, well, they're, they're doing exactly what we need them to do. It is not spread, uh, that virus. And so you, you might just, uh, see operas- leave as, as early as tomorrow, let's say, with a different mandate with one of our offices, or multiple offices. I mean, we are trying to work those with the same sort of sensitivity that we need to maintain services. But we also have to be the ones to say, stay home, that's, that's exactly what we're trying to tell people to do, so that, that means our own employees as well. Uh, we have a heightened sense of fear from our own employees that are up here, just like our first responders. But we have people visiting job sites, we have people doing inspections, we have people up there. And so I'm concerned with them in that respect as well. And so just know that we're minute by minute working on this to, to lessen the amount of people that are on the street, and we'll probably start seeing more and more of that come. And at a rapid pace from, from our office to you.
So on page number seven, we, we wanted to make sure that we were doing what other cities were doing, or to get all the ideas from other cities on what they could be doing. And so we called and we surveyed San Antonio, Austin, Brownsville, El Paso. Most of them are doing what we said, what we're doing, but some other exceptions. So most other cities have passed economic development incentives, that's San Antonio. They've paused their party funding in some areas, not, not the, um.
The assistance.
Not the assistance portion of it, but the other, for example, like in general fund. They've paused street maintenance projects. Pause capital improvement projects, including capital outlet, that's our equipment purchases. They've reduced temporary employees for agencies. All that we asked, we asked, what about salary reductions? None of them at this time are contemplating. So today's presentation provides very, very preliminary numbers. If we were to go down, and this is flume doom, right, if we were to go down to the fifteen percent, how long would that take us? Nineteen million dollars, based on all this information. Anywhere from, from, if we were to stay as is, well, to stay as is, without implementing any reductions or anything else, we'd be here another eight to nine weeks, without doing anything else. If we provide the assistance, you know, we apply for those grants that we need. If we start doing the reduc- these additional reduc- reductions, it'll take us longer, depending on how long this pandemic will last. The future dates will be providing you and adjusting the numbers, depending on how long this pandemic takes. You have any questions for me? Yes, ma'am.
This time, please.
On the, number three on the. Yes, ma'am. On page number three, is my mic on? Okay, sorry. On page number three, on the property taxes, we have it as minimal impact. But I think, uh, just looking at the, this trend with the utilities, uh, we should be plugging that in on the projections, because uh, currently, a lot of people, either homeowners or landlords, might be experiencing the people that are unemployed, unable to make the payments, so if you can't pay the mortgage, I mean, let's.
Well, we, we, we have a property taxes to occur, and that, I believe that was January, February, I'm not sure what the date of the month was. But everything that was due was paid for minimal, except for minimal, uh, delinquencies.
Because that was before the.
That was before deadlines, right? Before.
Yeah, I mean, that, that, that's why this one is a little bit different, where most of it is, is collected, most of it is. I think at least for the year. Now, moving forward, for sure, you know, we, we definitely do, we could start considering what it looks like for the year to come.
For next fiscal year.
With the bulk of our, our revenue that we get from sales tax is already in the bank, already paid for, for the majority of it, or a good majority of it's already paid.
Sales tax and, and property taxes.
All property taxes.
Uh, property taxes.
Property taxes.
You said sales.
I'm sorry.
We're gonna project on that. And then as far as the airport, uh, with the reduction on flights, is there a financial impact as well, like the way, uh, companies charge something?
Real serious, uh, and so that is one of the items that we're currently looking into, and we'll come back to you on that.
On the matter of the airport, that's what you mentioned, that Councilmember, you know, there's a range of trip to handle, this, this Mexican, uh, you know, airline, is, is that something that, that, you know, we're still allowing it, or, or suspended?
Well, so we mutually at least agreed to this point to suspend the initial flight. And push that down to, I believe it's, it's, uh, June, and I think if we've got, uh, someone from the airport to throw me the date, or, or, are you seeing?
Uh, June.
The attack date, and we've at least agreed to suspend that initial flight. Where we go past that, that's a bigger conversation. Uh, but at least, uh, to know what the date is, and I see Mr. Miller, you want to chime in on the date?
Yeah, uh, so there's no specific, um, we've, uh.
Yeah, we started with the.
Please, Mr. Miller. Is it okay now? Okay, uh, so, uh, June, a- at the earliest, was probably gonna be pushed even from there. All the airlines collectively, so the United States, the airlines obviously have, uh, part of the CARE Act, the fifty-seven billion dollar, uh, loans, and uh, a second component to that being grants that they can pull from, which we're still working through, like Rosario said. Part of that is ten billion for airports, we have a conversation with the FAA tomorrow to find out what that particular particularly will look like for Laredo, but, uh, as far as the Mexico City flight, we are in, in the contract with them, but as far as expending any of those funds, um, I don't anticipate that to happen until we're out of this. Um, obviously, the airlines are very sensitive about this situation, nobody's flying, so, uh, I, I, I think as far as the contract and moving forward, I don't anticipate us to see anything until we're out of this, as far as expending any funds. Uh, nothing like that will happen until, I think, the COVID nineteen is, is passed.
Yes, thank you very much. Yes, sir, go ahead, please.
So along the same lines, um, and the reason why I decided to combine my item with this presentation was for us to consider, um, assisting property owners with an eight point thirty-three percent discount from city property taxes for each month. That we have the city of a rate of emergency order, um, or ordinance in place, and how did we come up, or I come up with the eight point thirty-three? It's the broken down of the hundred percent by the twelve months. I find it, um, very, I guess, unfair for the city to expect its property owners to pay property taxes, let's just say for the month of April, when in essence, many of them, um, did not have a job, have not been able to collect rents for those that own other properties. Or those that own commercial properties have not been able to generate any type of income. Um, I know that right now, while discussing, um, potential loss of revenues, it's not the time to also discuss this type of, of matter, but I do, uh, I'm gonna get behind this, and I think that at the very least, I want the management to start putting some numbers together, start thinking what it would look like if we were to do this. Um, essentially, project that possibly council might consider this for at least, um, a one-time eight point thirty-three percent discount.
And so by doing this, it would, it would, depending on the number of months, it would take anywhere from half a million to eight hundred thousand dollars, depending on.
A month.
A month.
So, um, I, I think that when we hear half a million for a corporation that has a seven hundred million dollar budget, we're very short from it being a one billion dollar, um, budget corporation, I think that that's where management could, you know, figure something out, but I find it very, very unfair for the city to expect for its constituents to pay taxes for a month where we literally seized operations by order, obviously because of this health, um, issue that we have, but first there, our government entity cannot, um, um, expect people that are not making ends meet right now, because they're unemployed, or collecting a percentage of their paycheck from unemployment, to have to pay taxes, same thing with those apartment owners who are behind on, on rent collections. Uh, those that lease commercial suites and buildings. Um, and it's something for us to consider, I'm not, you know, jumping the gun here and making a motion to provide such discount now. Obviously, we want to evaluate this and see how long the order will take, and see how this rathers, but at least plan the seat and management and my colleagues that, um, we'll bring this item back with the eight point thirty-three percent consideration for the X amount of months, until we see us getting back, um, back on track with finances, but something to consider. You know, and if you're already projecting Mr. Reed to Mr. Cabejo, that half a million to eight hundred thousand dollars a month, considering also whatever, um, changes we will see in appraisals, obviously, because this is for next year's, um, tax collections. Then if it's two months, start thinking of a sixteen point sixty-six percent. If it's just one month, let's, you know, start looking into eight point thirty-three. And you do have the ability to factor this in in your new budget proposal for the next fiscal year, so.
Yeah, for, for, I was just suggesting, I know there's other. Keep in mind, too, that we need to distinguish, if possible, essential versus non-essential. There are some businesses that are going very, uh, you know, essential.
No, no, I agree.
Such a businesses, uh, uh, so.
Right, and I was gonna get to that, so we, we've kind of discussed this with legal, when we proposed, and it had to be either for, but you're for nobody, right? And, but my biggest concern would be your residential home taxpayer. Um, that, you know, making them come up with, with taxes for a month, but you could have seen no activity, and. How do you get that?
Yeah.
We also.
Look, we see a manager, and I think the doctor wanted it out.
Thank you, I just, uh, just quick, uh, point, uh, the plan, so we, we spend with our first responders, uh, sixty some odd percent of our, of our monies go towards that. And so I would, I, I would agree with the mayor's intent that, uh, we, we we empathize with our community that's, that's suffering and, and needing to, to pay. But this is where we get our money to pay our first responders, and so, you know, sixty, seventy percent of our money is going precisely for their taxes to pay first responders. So I, I'm not sure where we would come up with funding the very people that have not stopped. These are the ones that are out there on the streets and then responding to these emergencies, so I, I, I hear, um, what, what the direction wants to go and be, um, but I will just uh, challenge us all to remember that the bulk of our budget goes first to first responders. And they have a collective bargaining agreement to start, but aside from that, we need to continue to pay them, and these are the dollars that we use to pay.
I got from out there on the same question, and then we.
Yes, thank you, mayor. Um, okay, thank you, I appreciate that, so. So I, I think fundamentally, what we have to realize is that this recovery is gonna be uncomfortable. Right? But we need to start with that as a basic foundation block. It's not gonna be easy to recover from this, this blow, okay? And so decisions we make are gonna be difficult, and they're gonna seem extreme at times, because we're gonna be thinking, oh my goodness, can we really afford this? Including drawing down fund balances, which is something that we said we just wouldn't do. But it is, these are very uncertain times, we don't know if this is gonna last a month, we don't know if this is gonna last two months, we don't know if it's gonna last three months. But what we do know is that if we don't plan an economic recovery, it will not happen. In other words, we can't sit idly by and say that we're not going to try to, to invest in our city. Now, I understand that there are certain basic things or necessities that our sales tax, excuse me, our, our ad valorem taxes pay for. And so cutting ad valorem taxes may not be the right way of doing it, because those are the essential things that we use every single day. Trash, water, fire, police, these are the things that we do every day. But that doesn't mean that we can't incentivize growth, so that people have jobs going forward. That's what some of these other things are about, I just wanna make sure that we don't confuse those two things. One is shortfalls in our budget, and one is an economic incentive package that we have to put together to try to grow our economy. There, there, there are two separate things that are very important to recognize. Our city's still working, our, 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 our police officers are still out there, our firefighters are still out there. Our water's still being. Our water's still being, um, cleaned, our, our, our streets are still being cleaned. In other words, there's still a lot of work that's being done. And so we are utilizing those taxes, I think, in the appropriate manner. What is going to hurt us is the fact that people are being, every day, let go, and that our unemployment is going through the roof. And so I think that the best thing this council can do, going, i- i- if we're gonna talk about abatements or incentives, is make them specific for recovery efforts of our economy, so that we can get Laredoans back to work as quickly as possible.
A lot of federal programs now, state programs, that will be pumping money into, uh, the local economy as well, and now, as to when they arrive.
I, I think that, that is a great point, Mayor, but I think we have to act as if the federal government or the state government is not going to come rescue us.
No, and, and that's.
We have to respond. True, but, but remember, there will be opportunity assets. We're either gonna recover, just like everyone else, by happenstance, or we're gonna recover quickly and aggressively, because we have an active plan to get our economy moving in the right direction. And so it is uncomfortable to think about cuts, abatements, incentives, when we have legitimate, um, shortfalls the way we have. But we have a reserve that we put together for a rainy day, and if you look outside, it is raining right now. This is when we utilize these funds, this is when we create investment opportunities for our own city, this is when we create jobs in our community. This is what that money's for.
Well, uh, is it the same issue? No, no, go ahead, yeah, council member, I thought, uh, we cut it short, but I'll get back to you, uh, council member, go ahead.
Uh, yes, Mayor, um, well, what I wanted to say on this issue i- is that, uh, while giving a, a tax break, uh, i- is appropriate for some people, there are some people that have not been affected financially at all by this. Uh, there are some people that have two, you know, their families that have one job, or they have two jobs, their jobs are exactly the same, they're receiving exact same paycheck, let's say that, you know, they maybe work for the federal government, or they work for a governmental agency, and so, right now, when, just like, just like, uh, Councilman Artina said, right now, when, when.
Councilmember Bali, if, if you don't mind waiting a tiny bit, uh, councilmember, Yuma, was, was first in line, so.
Thought you were giving me the phone, sorry.
Okay, was I unmuted when I was talking, or no? No, okay, so, okay, so then, uh, what, what I'm saying is that from the perspective, I, I think, a- at least for me, I can see it and, and evaluate both sides, and, and we are at a very critical time, and money-wise, it's gonna be very tight, we're seeing the, the projections, so it will be very difficult for us to, right off the bat, and, and right now, be making these decisions about giving money, uh, when we don't have any numbers or justification or make the budget, just like we're doing in our own households, trying to cut to the essentials, trying to, uh, you know, amarrar el, el cinturón, right, like what, what Ms. Cabello is, is showing us today, what, what, uh, the her manager is showing us today. That's kind of what we need to be doing, but understanding also that, uh, there, it, as I was explaining, just in what I've seen in prior recessions such as the one we had in two thousand eight, and the ones we've had when the oil, uh, uh, employment dropped, I think that these issues are gonna be on a case-by-case basis, and they will be decided by the supervisors in those departments to be given these, these people if they're, uh, owing to give more time to pay, or if they have to go to court, usually the judges will understand that and give people more time to pay, either on the property taxes, on the child support, or, or in any other contractual obligations, uh, because that, that's coming also, you know, from the federal government, from the state government, and, and from the local government, and it's something that, that's gonna be, uh, uh, you know, at, at other levels also dealt with, but, uh, also going with what Dr. Marte is mentioning, in order for us to continue and make sure that we ensure that we're providing the essential services, we cannot, uh, be making cuts on, on, on the essentials, we have to be able to know, okay, this is the budget, we have to tighten the belt, and, and as you're doing with the fifteen percent reduction in other budgets, and, and, uh, changing some of those numbers as to the minimal bit possible, and just like it happened with the New Deal, a lot of the bringing back people after, after the depression is gonna be the, the capital improvements, the contracts that the government is gonna be able to, uh, project to give people more jobs, and so I think that's, that's part of our, our economic, uh, development recovery, and, and at this point, although we know that people, I mean, for example, if I have my, my business closed, uh, I've been getting, uh, texts and calls, do I pay the water? Well, that's part of the problem that we've been having before with the water issues, and so, uh, we can't afford to stop getting the revenue because then we cannot project for the needs that we already have financially, so we need to try to tighten the budget, try to cut also ourselves the, the extra expenses, which we see that, that you guys are doing, and so continue, uh, looking at that, but at this point, I think it's kind of early to try to start giving, uh, discounts, so until we know what the, the projections are and where we're at.
Okay, councilmember Bali, uh. Councilmember Bali, go ahead, please.
Y- yes, uh, uh, although I agree with councilmember Torres that, that, uh, tax break would, would be good for people who are hurting, uh, there are people that, that, um, are not, that, that they're hurting in the sense, I mean, the whole community's hurting, but they may not be hurting financially, they may have, be from a family where they have two incomes that where they work for the federal government, or a state government, uh, or a school district, uh, a- and their finances are exactly the same, that person doesn't need a tax break, uh, i- i- it, the way someone else would, I mean, obviously, everybody wants a tax break, but right now, we are hurting, and, and, uh, there are some people in the community that maybe have lost their jobs, or they're small business owners, they, they're losing their small business, or may permanently lose their small business, and folks like that may need that tax break, so I, I would be okay with it if it was something that we gave as a grant, in other words, tax assistance, a tax assistance grant, a- a- and, and obviously, the problem with that is management of a grant, um, a- and because it's bureaucratic, it's, it, it's simpler to just say, just give it to everybody, although I don't know if it's more cost-effective, what would be more cost-effective, to just give it to everybody without any administration, or to have some sort of administration, or to have a simple administration where somebody, if they wanted the tax break, they would specifically come into the tax office, um, and, or, or sign an affidavit under oath, uh, uh, under penalty of perjury, that their income was affected, and to explain why it was affected, and submit that affidavit, and that way, we, people are, are, are giving their, uh, an oath, and punishable, you know, as a crime if they're, if, if they're lying about it. Um, but, I mean, for the most part, I mean, we would expect people to be honest, submit the affidavit and request the, the, the tax break if they've lost their job, or lost their business, or lost rental income in the sense that, that councilmember Torres is, is saying, so, that, that's how I would favor it, as a grant, only for those who are affected by it and who request it, and not across the board.
Mayor.
Thank you, yeah, yeah, but let me just mention, uh, something here right quick. Keep in mind, all of our, uh, property tax, all of our sales tax, was half or more of the bridge goes for general fund, and then sixty-some percent goes to, uh, first responders. So personally speaking, there's not much room there.
I'd like to point out a couple of things. One of them would be, we've done the analysis on the city, what, it would affect the city, but we haven't done the analysis yet on what it would do for the average taxpayer. So it's maybe, maybe ten dollars, twenty dollars, thirty dollars, depending on the value of a home, and is that really going to help the homeowner at this point? Maybe we're saying, well, yes, twenty dollars is twenty dollars, but at what point do we say no? One thing, two things is, we haven't talked about the salary cap that we'll be having, and that's a huge impact for the city, little over a million and a half, the, the, the tax. The third thing is, we're going to start negotiations with our police, police department very soon. So that's something in itself that, that will come up, and I'm sure because of COVID nineteen, there'll be implications also, so, right now, I completely agree, we need to stop and continue to evaluate and work towards an economic development program in the future.
Thanks, anyone else?
Yes, yes, go ahead.
And what you're talking about is an economic development recovery task force that we need to put together, because, uh, that is very, very important for us, uh, to start the planning process, and I'm su- I've already talked to our city manager, and he's put together, uh, a, a, a group that you're involved in, uh, but, um, it's something that we have to be looking at on a daily basis, because this is serious, and, uh, it's gonna get worse before it gets better. Okay, anyone else?
If we're going, um, if we're going to have a task force from city, um, people, uh, or, or city staff, um, I, I, I just think that it's, i- it's kind of difficult because they're running their day-to-day operations plus a pandemic crisis, plus, I mean.
Right, so, yeah, to, the, the group, yeah, so we have private sector?
We have an economic development director, an economic. Oh, I'm, I'm here, sir, I'm just talking. And so I, 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 I think that that is the course of action, is to task our economic development director with heading this, and I know you guys are already doing it, so I, I'm not preaching to the choir here, uh, but I just wanna make sure that, that we realize that, um, the larger you make it, although you'll get great input, the less likely you are to be efficient in this, and right now, time is money.
So, for sure, thank you, Councilor from the votes, the first thing that we did was task and get on board, L D C, uh, Chamber Commerce, and so professionals, business professional, private sector involved, and, and taking the lead with our economic development, uh, team as well. And so, we're saying the same thing for sure, and, and we agree that once we start to expand to a bigger footprint, that it gets more difficult to manage, but we have people that are focused, private sector, public sector, but a lot of private sector that are just focused on this point precisely. Uh, Teco, I've seen on our, from our side, and others have been tasked with justice recovery, business recovery side of this, on a day-to-day basis, so as, as we manage the, the pandemic, the actual emergency operation side of this, uh, we are running tracks, different tracks, and this business recovery portion is, is a major one that's.
Move up my, my items.
Okay, pass.
Why, Mayor, is, is, uh, regarding that, uh, this precise topic, motion to move up item sixty H one.
Okay, and there's a motion, is there a second? Uh, what was the paper, say?
Discussion with possible action to direct management to have city's economic development director. It's not on?
Yes. What is your, uh?
It's, uh, sixty H one. Discussion with possible action to direct management to have city's economic development director and economic development corporation work with the private sector to create an economic development recovery plan, and any other matters, incident thirteen-two. And I notice there's been several meetings, I participated in one last week, and we're gonna be having meetings, uh, weekly, and, and part of the, the process is we're starting with assessing the damage, what businesses were affected, how many uh, jobs have we lost, what areas, what trends, and also with workforce development, what sort of skills might be, we'd be looking at so that we can, uh, recover, so, uh, I understand it's, it's been done, I guess, but I don't know if officially, uh, if we can all, and, and I know that, that council member Marte had also mentioned that at, at our last meeting, and if, if, uh, if we can have this, uh, as an official, uh, task force for the, the city, I'll move, uh, for that as a task force.
Okay, so, to include that, okay, there's a motion, is there a second?
Just, Mayor, may I be heard? Because there's a motion, I'm sorry, I was muted. Uh, there's a motion of the councilmember, uh, Vilma, as, as stated, as stated by Dr. Martin, I've been in a discussion. Yes, go ahead, sir.
Who's part of the task force, the economic development task force? Or the groups?
Uh, yes, uh.
Would you sort it out, please?
Yeah.
Yes, uh, uh, thank you very much, uh, our mayor, the city council. Um, there, uh, I have, uh, just to follow up on what, uh, councilman, um, nearly said about, uh, about the task uh, forces and meetings and forth, um, as far as I'm aware, there's no formal task force as of yet. However, I have met with the private sector, uh, uh, several times in the last two weeks, I've had several roundtables with, uh, bankers, with small business owners, we gleaned information from, from, we did some crowdsourcing on Facebook, uh, I've met, uh, almost on a daily basis with the Texas Workforce Commission, our, our workforce solutions. I've met daily with, with, uh, our mile one, Laredo E D C, and Laredo Chamber about and, uh, things, whether it's virtual or emails, uh, so, we're working on a lot of channels, as, uh, Mr. Ead said, uh, to try to move forward with, with the plan. Uh, I'm open to whatever, obviously, the, the city council is, is going to suggest that we do, uh, but, um, we're trying to move as quick as possible. One thing I can tell you that the business community, uh, is asking, and, and, uh, you know, we've, like I said, I've met with dozens and dozens of, of people, is that, um, that they, they're allowed to get back to work, they understand the, the, the aspect, no one is suggesting that they, they not follow the rules. But when it comes to recovery, let them get going, let construction continue, let businesses, let, let contracts be let out. Uh, you know, a, a, a contract, uh, especially if it's a big one from textile or, or the federal government, that will, uh, get a lot of sub, subcontractors going, that will allow other folks to get started, and those folks who are gonna get paid, they're gonna go into restaurants, they're gonna go into stores, they're gonna spend money, so, those are the kind of things that I'm hearing back from them.
Yes, sir. Quick, quick from the mom and pop stores, uh, have you visited?
It's a, it's one, like, which I don't have in front of me, but we've met with, uh, uh, secure, people who, uh, have small security firms, people who have snack shops, people who run a coffee shop, those kind of smaller that have like ten or less people, or twenty-five and less employees, uh, that, um, we've met with those, but we've also met with the big guys too.
Just, just, uh, when we're designing the task force, I really like for a council to consider that the majority at the table be the mom and pops, be the life of the city. Uh, those are the most effective people, the longtime residents, our mom and pop shops, regardless of their restaurants, and regardless of their gymnasiums, whatever it is, but they should have a majority, or they should have a big word on what's going on, and how, how can they actually benefit or survive this, uh, pandemic that we're going through?
Yes, sir, uh, let me just add that, um, um, regarding, uh, economic incentives, I mean, we've got a couple of, of companies right now that are, that are ready to, uh, to expand, uh, in, in Laredo, um, if, if we can work something out with them, right? We have another one that we just did that you guys approved of, uh, the Mission Produce, uh, on April twentieth, right after that, they're ready to start construction, they're gonna hire hundreds of people. Uh, so, those are the kind of, uh, projects that are sitting on the table, that, um, that business just really wants to get going, and there's other projects that I can mention here, but I don't wanna take up too much time, but, but those are the kind of examples that, that business is talking about, allowing them to continue, uh, to move forward on.
Oh, the, the idea behind this task force is that the people that are affected, the people from all the different, um, the idea behind this, sorry, rewind, the idea behind this task force is that it will be composed, and it has been composed so far from the meetings that, that, uh, have been going on, from people that are directly affected, uh, business owners and, and all the different sectors of, of business and, and professions, and, uh, from, from what we gathered in the meeting last, last week, some of the initial needs are to provide a lot of this information to, to the, uh, mom and pop shops, for example, the information on the, on the loans, which as the council member, I'll go, I had placed an agenda item on that, we had information about, uh, trying to go digital and virtual so that they can continue their business if it's non-essential, uh, we, uh, we're sharing and sending through the. Uh, we, uh, were sharing and sending through the Laredo Chamber, the, the applications through, uh, mile one as well. They were putting a landing page so that people can know all of the, the resources available so that they can survive, uh, during this time. And also, uh, there is a need to, for them to learn a little bit more about cyber security and, and issues and that sort into going digital. So, I think that the task force is open to anybody that wants to contribute. Because there's so many areas that have been worked on that there's gonna be different sub-task forces. In, in all the different, uh, you know, specifics of the industries. And also for them to, to, uh, to learn if, if they're not on the essential list. Uh, uh, as according to the governor and the federal government, there is also a webpage where they can apply to get that designation. And I think all of the construction is, uh, is already under the essential list. So, that, that's part of what the, the task force should be doing. And, uh, I mean, so I, I don't think we should limit it, I don't think we should make it, uh, political appointees. I think it's people that are actually living and breathing in these different environments of the industries. So that they can have the, the resources, uh, all together, and there's gonna be subcommittees developed depending on, on the different areas of, of, uh.
Who's this? Yes, okay, yes, go ahead, sir, please.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Uh, hold on, hold on, uh, start again.
Yeah, just checking to see if you can, if you can hear me all right. Yeah, okay, good. So, um, uh, you know, statistically, we know which businesses fuel the U S economy. We know which businesses fuel the, the, the local economy and, and to, to council member Rodriguez and Yelma's points. It's, it's small businesses, right? You know, the small businesses power the economy. And, um, and, and to that end, um, and we'll, we'll get to my agenda item later, but, you know, um, if we have. If we had a dedicated contingent of these non-essential personnel that are being paid to stay home. If we could cross-train them and how to assist, um, local mom and pops, if you will, on applying for these. Grants and loans, um, you can imagine how that would be injecting stimulus into the, um, economy. I mean, I think the average grant is, is ten thousand bucks, five hundred small businesses apply for ten thousand dollars. You can see that's five million bucks circulating within our local economy alone, sure, so bear that in mind. Um, I, I would, um, also agree very much so with Dr. Martinez and Mr. Bali. That, um, we need to be very targeted and surgical with our, uh, economic development. Um, because, because we, 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 we already know which businesses are, uh, have taken a hit. I mean, we, we identified them, the governor identified them, you know, it's restaurants, it's bars, it's hair salons. Uh, in many respects, uh, it's daycares, and that's something we're gonna need to jump into in a little bit. But we know which businesses are taking a hit. And, um, I really like this environment, this, uh, economic development task force, if you will. I think council member Vilma, you're tracking in the right direction, that we, we've got an idea of, of who knows. Um, about, uh, um, economic development, certainly, I guess, kind of at that, at that, at that, at that upper level. But, uh, to council member Rodriguez's point, you know, there nee, there needs to be. Nobody knows what small business owners need more than small business owners. Their, their, their voice is gonna have to be heard. So that our economic development recovery strategy is, um, designed around. You know, that nucleus. And so, uh, we also know that, um, the. And I, and I agree with Dr. Martinez, I mean, I don't think the, the, the governor, I don't think Governor Abbott is coming to our rescue. I don't think, certainly don't think, uh, that, um, the federal administration is coming to our rescue. This is a self-rescue operation. And so, um, but there are resources out there, and if we could take some of these non-essential personnel that are being paid to stay home. Cross-train them so that they can assist, uh, uh, we can set up a hotline and they can assist people. To fill out those S B A, uh, grant forms or loan forms or otherwise, you know, target those. Industries that we've already shut down, um, then we can, um, at least keep people paid. During this, uh, you know, May. Going into June, it's rather uncertain, uh, what some of the epidemiology predictions are. Um, uh, so, uh, we need to be thinking along those lines. And, and I'm, and I'm happy to support, uh, any, um, uh, any motions that, that further those, uh, ends. Thank you. Add something, uh, uh, Mayor? Uh, I'd like to follow up on, on one of, uh, uh, council member Algo's, uh, uh, comments. Um, and he, he mentioned, uh, you know, something about, um. Five hundred, uh, small businesses were able to apply for the federal program. Uh, you know, you'd get five million dollars in, in, in the, um, you know, circulated in the local economy. Uh, so I'm gonna take that and just stress that the number one program out there right now. Which is funded through the stimulus. And, uh, right now, I, uh, the S B A is, is handling that.
Can you repeat, can you repeat that? Because we, we got cut off there.
Okay, uh, the number one thing we can do right now, small businesses. Um, is apply for the paycheck protection program. There's, this is a program that the S B A, the Small Business Administration, is running, uh, through local, um. Certified lenders, um, and, and they, uh. They are taking applications right now. I've talked to financial institutions here in Laredo, who are processing hundreds and hundreds of applications. Um, I just got a report even from Lift Fund, who does a little business in Laredo, they're handling, uh, applications. The paycheck protection program is for businesses who did not let go of their employees, tried to keep them around. This would, this would pay them, and these loans are forgivable. Uh, but this money won't stay around forever. People have to apply and have to move, uh, now to apply. And it's not very difficult. I've been through the process, I've looked at it, there's several online tutorials. The paycheck protection program, people have to move and get on it. Uh, it, it's, it's, it's extremely simple. It could take you ten minutes to fill it out.
All right, a cou- a couple of points here. Number one, I'm going through that paperwork too. It does not take ten minutes. Um, so, but just be honest, it, it takes expertise. If you have a, even a, a, a business with fifteen to twenty-five employees, uh, uh, it, it's not simple. I know Teco, you're shaking your head, but I've been going at it for a while now, a- and the payroll, and you're gonna pay. You, you gotta get not just your payroll, but how much you've paid in social security, how much you've paid in, in your, uh, to your, uh, employees. As far as, um, insurance, and then also the, the retirement, and as well as the profit sharing. You gotta get a formula, and then that formula has to be applied to the paperwork. In addition to having several papers, you need to have your nine oh one, you need to have your, I mean, your four hundred, your four oh one, your four oh two. So, like, and you have to do your payroll taxes for the last year, and so it, it, there's a significant amount of requirements to this thing. And, and I don't think that people can just fill it out in ten minutes. I think people need help to fill it out, because I know I'm needing help to fill it out. Uh, and so that's why I think having non-essential people, um, helping, uh, being retrained to do this would be very important for us. And, and time is of the essence.
Council, council.
Hold on one second, Teco, I'm sorry.
Yeah, hold on, Teco, uh, hold on.
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Uh, uh, that program is run through local lenders. Uh, lenders are, or the ones who have been helping people fill this out, because the paycheck protection program, you can't do that on your own, just submit it to the S B A.
Yeah, yeah, yes, sir, I, 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 I'm, I'm aware, but I think it's still, uh, even though small businesses can apply, I don't think it's that, that easy. I think they still need some assistance, and I think the banks will be helpful, but, but I think we, uh, uh, we can be helpful as well. Because that's money that can come in and it's gonna dry up, because it's only a few hundred billion dollars that'll dry up in, in, in less than two, three weeks. And so time is of the essence in that. Um, to, to the other thing, um, that I wanted to make, you know, when we're talking about a task force. Um, I, I understand getting the, um, uh, the opinion of all business owners, small business owners. Medium business owners and large business owners, but when I talk about a task force for recovery, I'm, I'm talking about economists. I'm talking about, um, people that have done, uh, economic incentives. I'm talking about people that understand economic recovery. I'm talking about global scale, how do we target incentives to maximize benefit for our, for our city? Um, and, and gaining experience from small business owners will be, i- i- is very important. But that is not gonna give us the information that we need to understand where our money is gonna go the furthest. And that, that's what I'm, I'm talking about on a global economic scale, talking to economists. And talking to, uh, people that have gone through these kind of recoveries before, and coming up with a real, a real task force of people. So that we, uh, invest, are, are, we're maximizing those dollars. That, that's what I mean by a task force, uh, and that's, that's what I think is important in this recovery. We have to be at that level. Um, if we're not at that level, I think we'll get a lot of opinions, um, but we won't have any real plan going forward. And we need a, uh, we need a real plan going forward.
Who can organize this course? I know we, we set up this task force, so. And Mr. Garcia, uh, or Mr. City Manager, uh, yeah, so you're, you know, we're just saying.
To lead on, obviously, on this, but, uh, I, I do understand what the request is. We can provide as much over-the-phone assistance as we can, uh, so that can happen as well, so. Uh, we're trying to check all those boxes off, and there's task force as well. I think there's a couple of different things happening here. So, yeah, so on the recovery side of that, I think there's a more scholarly approach that's being requested. That we can run off of, and then we can have that one-on-one more intimate contact with our small business owners. And those individuals have businesses that, that we can help with. We, we can be both, and we, we can accomplish that.
And I would accept that as an amendment, because there has to be two tiers, like the, the stra- strategies or the strategies. And, and also the, the people that, that are, you know, the day-to-day and different, uh, divisions of the, the industries.
Do we make that amendment?
You restate, I'm not sure that council member Vilma was, was on, so can you, maybe?
Yeah, so we're talking about two different, um, uh, levels, two tiers, if you will. One is the, yes, sir, logistic, um, and technical aspect of recovery efforts to include economists. Uh, if possible, or people that can show us how to best target our, uh, economic incentives to stimulate our economy. Uh, the second being a task force, um, to talk to small and medium business owners. To ensure that their needs are being met through this crisis, and what their recovery will look like, what their needs are during this recovery. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, I was unmuted. So there was a motion in a second, as, as presented, uh, uh, what was the paper by seven? Any opposed by sign? The motion carries unanimously, thank you.
Mayor, may I be recognized?
Yes, go ahead, please.
I'd like to make a motion to instruct, uh, management to, uh, consider an April thirty-three percent discount. Um, from city property taxes for each month, the city of Laredo. Emergency order, emergency ordinance is in place as a consideration to evaluate the financial impact. To bring that to council, um, to explore the possibility of adopting it based on the projected, um, revenue loss. Proceed with the, proceed with this, but to start instructing management to start exploring it. And, um, evaluating, um, what that figure would look like, um, so that we can get further, um, direction as to. Um, whether or not council would consider that, and if so, so they could plan ahead of time for their fiscal budget, um, by the time it's presented to council in August.
The legality of expecting the tax code may not allow for it. I, we were talking, um, with the tax department, and but there.
And to, and to include further, um, research from the legal department on the legality of such proposal.
Or give us the, uh, feasibility, if you're doing work, and also the legality of it. Okay, call for the question. All those in favor say aye. I sign, uh, and all those approve by sign. Okay, then, yeah, let's not call for the vote again, uh, all those in favor of that motion, uh, say aye. To begin with, with the district one.
Yes, sir, uh, not taking this in a basket.
One, okay, two? Three? Four?
Yes.
Five?
No.
Six?
Seven. Can we hear the motion again, please?
Seven is, uh, Mr. Alken?
Can, can we hear the motion again, please?
And Mr. Alken, what is your vote?
Councilmember, it's to instruct, uh, staff, management and staff to look at the possibility of an eight point three-three percent reduction for the month. For one month, uh, and, and just to look at it, check the feasibility and the legality of it. Not to do it, but to check the feasibility and the legality of it.
Okay, yeah, all right, we can explore that, yeah, I'm good with that. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, and council member Bali?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
I have a motion to bring up, I have sixty. D, unless you're done, are you done? Okay, there's a motion, bring up item sixty D, yeah, as any others, is your second? There's a second, everybody's member, I think it's a second group, a discussion. Then all those in favor say aye, by sign. Uh, all against by sign, uh. I hear it, it's even on, we motion carry.
Mayor, for, for this one, uh, I think, I think this is something going for not only, uh, you know, to present right now. But so that the community can understand what, what's really going on out there, of course, COVID nineteen is really hard these past, uh, a couple of weeks. And we don't know what the future holds, uh, we're, we're hoping it, it gets better, of course. Uh, that's our goal, that's everybody's goal as a, as a city, as a county and as a state entity. Uh, so my, my request is that, uh, it's a discussion with possible action to implement the limit of people. That go out in public to purchase essentials, with children due to a pand- pandemic of COVID nineteen in our community. And any other matter incident there too. So, what I've been seeing a lot, and, and I'm, I'm, I'm talking about H E Bs, Walmart stores. You're seeing, uh, especially in Walmarts, uh, you, you go in Walmarts and H E Bs and you'll see, uh, uh, personnel. You'll see mother, father, uh, with about three kids. Uh, you see the mom with two kids, sometimes they're covered, sometimes they're not, they're not, you know, and I think it's, it's, it's a high risk. Uh, it's something that we don't wanna get our, our youth, uh, exposed to, of course. So, what, what I wanted to do, and I know, I, I think I, I spoke to management, uh. They mentioned to me earlier, and, and Assistant Chief, uh, well, he's also mentioned to me that Walmart, uh, has, uh, has agreed. Uh, they've actually, uh, they, they reached out to, to one of our chiefs and, and said that, uh, as long as we pass it, we pass it. Um, their corporate office, uh, at Walmart will, will be by it. And, uh, you know, follow, follow the ordinance that, that, uh, that, if we do, uh, get it through. Um, so, I mean, I don't know what you guys think, but I think it's very important that either the mother and the father can go together, or the mother by herself. Or the father, uh.
For discussion purposes, yes.
You know, we do have hardships, and sometimes the, the dad is working, it's an essential job.
Yes.
And then the mother ends up with the children, and, and, and she, she needs to, you know, she needs something in the store, milk, cakes, whatever, bread, and. And, uh, and there's no childcare or.
No, that's understandable, that's understandable.
No, this is just a scenario, um, but, but I guess they can make arrangements, but it could present hardships for some people.
How, how would you enforce it? Just like our, our curfew, I mean, I can go back to the curfew, how do you enforce it? If, but, uh, you're allowed to buy, uh, adult beverages and hot dogs at a store, so everybody's just gonna use that excuse and says, you know what? I'll take a hot dog. Uh, they pull them over, they can't get sidetracked, because they're all done. They don't even eat food, so it's the same thing, what's, what's, we have a curfew, but what's the? The use of the curfew, it can't work.
I, I think, I, I think that, what, um, not to put words in, in council members' intelligence, but I think what he's, the spirit of what he's trying to say. Is that we're trying to limit the amount of children that go in the stores. The spirit of what he's trying to say is that we're trying to limit the amount of children that go in the stores. And by creating this ordinance, if you will, to limit this, um, yes, there's there's still going to be. Uh, the police will still be able to look at it and to take it by a case-by-case basis, but what we're trying to do is stress the importance of staying home. This is just another step in trying to enforce uh, what what we think to be the most important thing. Uh, in this re- in in this pandemic, which is social distancing, especially to our 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 children. And so, uh, Councilmember Gonzalez, is is that accurate? What we're trying to do?
Dear, what is actually very accurate? I think that Councilmember Bali, uh, wait, hold on.
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead, uh, Councilmember Bali, and then, uh, see, Dr. Gonzalez wants to say something too. Councilmember, please go ahead.
I don't want to be repetitive, but I I want there to be an exception for people who don't have childcare. Uh, a- and a- again, the council member, uh, Gonzalez said, yes, there's going to be people who are going to try to get around the rule. But I think what we're seeing is people trying to comply. And for the most part, you know, there's always those people who don't want to comply, but I think that what we're seeing in the community is people. Uh, wanting to 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 comply. I mean, I I can tell you that, um. You know, I I love the sounds of the city. And uh, last night, beautiful night, you know, had the windows open. And I could not hear cars out there, uh, at at night. And um, people are are complying. Um, and uh, you know, even right now, I've got my windows open. And there's very few cars passing by, so it is, it is different. It, uh, I think people want to comply. But let's make an exception for uh, parents that don't have childcare. Because they need to be able to go to the grocery store, and not everybody has a credit card where they can go and order from Walmart or HEB. You know, to 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 pick up. Not everybody has that luxury. Not everybody has another parent in the picture. Not everybody is in that situation. Um, and so we do need to make an exception. And uh, that way, uh, yes, the law enforcement may inquire. Uh, and and yes, some people will be honest and some people won't, but I think it will. By by passing this with the exception, most people will obey by the by the rule and play by the rules. And people will get the message that we're serious about this. And uh, the word will get get out that we are serious about this. And I think people in the community, from what I've seen on social media, is uh, people don't support people going out with their families to the stores. And so people are getting it.
Uh, thank you, I think Dr. Gonzalez.
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Gonzalez, did you have a question?
Mayor, members of the council, Edgo Gonzalez, Director of Health Department, and head doctor Trevino, if you're with me as well. We agree.
Oh, okay, hold on, hold on, Dr. Gonzalez. Yes, go ahead.
The the medical committee has been saying that for a while, we've been promoting it. Don't, the whole family shouldn't go to the store, shouldn't go to the pharmacy, shouldn't go to the grocery. Too many people are still going out. And and yes, you, um, enforcement can have some discretion, but the more that we keep people at home, the better. And the transmission right now is is. Clustering, so if we can reduce the amount of people that are going to the grocery store. Yesterday, I saw five people in one family going to the supermarket. And and yes, there may be an issue of 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 daycare, and 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 so we need to take that into account, but. I think the message has to be only one member of the family go to the store.
Thank you. Anyone else call for that?
Oh, thank you, um, appreciated, Dr. Um, so. Yeah, and I understand that people, uh, sometimes they might not have a a a, you know, babysitter or or access to. To somebody who can care. But I think that the the, you know, our our city local, uh, police officers have done exceptional jobs. And also, uh, other private entities, and the county itself does a lot, the state troopers have been out there helping a lot, uh. And I'll tell you, from my experience, I I I went in right along on Friday, Friday night. To check out the curfew, um. But uh, leave that for another day. I was out there, I was actually out there patrolling. Just see you right now. I mean, I I can, because I'm still a peace officer, so I can. I'll let you know, uh, in another meeting.
Somebody call for the question? Uh, so what's your name, say aye?
So. Yes, with, uh, so that's going to be my motion, it's going to be, um. You know, to implement the limit of people that go out in public to purchase essentials with children due to the pandemic of COVID nineteen. With the exception of those that do not have childcare or do not have somebody who care uh, to care for their children at home.
As presented and seconded by Councilmember Gonzalez.
Yes, please.
Okay, call for the question. All those in favor say aye by sign? All those against? Um, C, or R, so uh, the motion carries. Thank you, next.
Briefly, along the the lines of the same item. Uh, in discussing and and Mrs. Hell, if if I'm, you know, too out of line with the language presented on the agenda item, I guess you could cut me off. Um, along the same lines, and in speaking with um, our health authority, could we cover?
Let it take the item, is that?
The same one that 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 we just discussed with Councilmember Gonzalez, D one. Could we discuss the potential, um, uh, masks and the mandate of. Uh, amending the ordinance as well to include the recommendation our health authority was mentioning to us earlier today? Regarding no exceptions on the masks, or is it too broad? Or or too out of? Too broad, okay, then I'll defer for another meeting.
Okay, thank you.
So, okay, so can we could discuss it and I'll take action?
Authority actually has the authority at any time to, um, um, recommend any type of order, so we could add it as well.
Okay, so, um, I I'd like to call on Dr. Trevino. Dr. Trevino, are you there?
Yes, how am I?
Dr. Trevino, could could you please indulge, um, the mayor and the city council on the discussion we had? Uh, regarding your recommendation of why you you feel that at this time it's important that a mask be worn. Um, at all times, and for us to consider removing the exclusions that we currently have in the existing, um, order or ordinance?
Yes, uh, reason we're trying to do that is because of the exception. Can you hear us? Can you hear us? Hmm. Yeah, they think they went to a register. Okay, can you hear me? Hear me? Shoot that one, mute the computer? Okay. Okay, okay. I'm here on the phone, if you, if you can hear me? Yes. You're going to hear us, we're here. All right. I'm on the phone, if, uh, you can hear me. This is Dr. Trevino.
Yes, uh, Dr. Trevino, do you want to try again? I'm sorry, we.
Yes, yes. All right. Yes, the, uh, opinion would be that, uh, because people are exercising outside. And they're walking around the schools, uh, getting out of their houses, which is understandable. Uh, they do, uh, want to make exercise, which is good, but I see groups of people passing each other. In different directions and walking in groups and close to each other around the schools without, uh, mask. Because that is the exception right now. The the intent of that was, uh, so people would would do exercise and breathe fine and everything, but. Because, uh, the exception makes the possible contamination worse. Because, uh, exercising in groups or people congregating outside. Uh, and with the idea of doing exercise is a deterrent to what we want to do to prevent the the. Contamination or, uh, the prolongation of this virus. So I would suggest, my medical opinion would be that the mask be worn at all times outside.
Okay, Dr. Uh, uh, then we have, uh, so. Councilmember Nelly Delba, next, go ahead.
Um, for the record, Mrs. Hell, could you explain to us what the exceptions are? And then maybe Dr. Trevino could take each one of them into consideration and tell us what is it that he. Um, recommends that we remove from those exceptions? And maybe you could follow, um, with us, Dr. Trevino, and give us your your suggestion or or advice on this?
The exceptions are as follows. The first is when engaging in a permissible outside activity such as running, jogging. The one he recommends. The second one would be like.
Do- do- Dr. Trevino, I guess as Mrs. Hell is reading them, could you say yes or no? Doctor?
People are gr- running in groups. Yes, can you hear me? Okay.
Yes, Dr. Go ahead.
That exception should be removed because people are running in groups.
The second, the second would be when riding in a personal vehicle?
When dr- when driving in a personal vehicle, riding.
Inside the car, uh, that could be take, that could be stay, say yes, it is, if you're by yourself. By yourself or an economy unit, no. If you're by yourself, you don't.
So I guess what you're saying, doctor, that even at home? I mean, a a house in a corner is is another example of being inside a house, huh?
Yes, I don't, I don't think we can, uh, and well, I don't think we can enforce that, uh, legally. Can somebody give me some legal opinion on that, if you can enforce it inside the house?
There would be no way to enforce that. I mean, we wouldn't be able to know that.
You recommend it?
Yeah, you can recommend it, definitely. I would recommend.
Yes. Recommend, recommendation to wear it inside the house would be there, but, uh, not not an ordinance or a mandate. Well, even if it's a shelter unit, I mean. Yeah. Like we're walking with our spouse? Regretfully, when you're walking. When you're walking outside, regretfully.
I think that what's being missed here is that Dr. Trevino.
Hold on, please, sir.
What Dr. Trevino, and correct me if wrong, doctor, is trying to tell us is that at this point, we don't know who's asymptomatic to this. So it could be you, and you're exposing your wife.
Right, but you're still, it, you're still a shelter unit.
But he's ta- he's telling you that if you're at home, that obviously there's no enforcement, but he's recommending a self-authority. That you weren't in your home. For instance, my wife and son haven't left the house at all. I walk in and out of the house a lot.
A lot.
So I could expose them. He's saying in your case, we won't. If you're the designated person that's going out there to Walmart, to HEB, to work. And your family is indoors, you're doing no good by them being sheltered, and you are potentially exposing them. So you wear the mask to protect your 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 own shelter, same thing with what within the vehicle. I think that's what we're missing here, and i- is is that accurate, Dr. Trevino?
Yes, that is accurate.
Hold on, hold on. Go ahead, man.
Yes, that is exactly correct. If, uh, you come from the outside and you, uh, take the shower and, uh. Uh, wash your clothes and everything, you still have the breathing part. So it is recommended that you use a mask, and these measures might be harsh. And might, they might look, uh, re- redundant, but we're trying to get ahead of this virus in any way we can. And that is a positive thing, so we would rather err in the side of protection than err in the side of negligence.
If we understand you correctly, doctor, anytime you're outside of the home. You should be wearing a mask for the, uh, walking, uh, in your automobile, bicycling. You know, all, you know, at all times, outside of the house, wear a mask. Hold on.
Yes.
Go ahead, yes.
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Martha Martinez, go ahead.
All right, so a c- a couple of things I think that are important here, and and, um. I I I want to reiterate the importance of these things. Number one, um, the point is, don't go out unless you have to, okay? Number two, um, exercise is important, and small contact, in other words, walking by yourself or riding by yourself. Is it is negligible risk of getting the infection. If you are in groups, um, then a- and those are not your family unit, then I absolutely understand using a mask. Now, um, not many people have access to multiple masks, okay? And if we're saying that our, some of the the protection is the mask itself. The mask, if in our home, is a source of infection itself, right? And so if you're going to use a mask on the, you're going to come home, you need to remove that mask and replace it with a new mask. Right? If you're trying to prevent infection to your family. You, i- if most people don't have two or three masks, I don't really recommend them using, you know, cover themselves with something else. I don't recommend people, and this is my recommendation, do not take your masks that you've been using all day long. Into your home, just like I would recommend you not take whatever clothes you've been using all day long into your home, your shoes, that sort of stuff. Because you don't know. There's a new study that's come out, just came out today, um, talking about when or how long vi- this virus lasts. And in masks, it can last up to seven hours because of the fabric of a mask. And so again, I would absolutely recommend people wear masks if you're the one going in and out to try to protect your family. But I also would recommend that you change your masks out, wear whatever you're going to use in your face because of the risk of that mask infecting the people you're trying to protect. So, um, that's all I'll say for now. I do think it's important, though, to realize that these masks are only a secondary measure. This is not, this is not the primary measure. The primary measure is social distancing. The primary measure is social distancing, staying home, staying away from areas that you could potentially be infected, going straight to wherever you wanna go, and then come home, wash your clothes, take a shower. That is the way you protect yourself and your family. Not going out to different places, not going out to multiple businesses, not, don't do that. These masks should not serve as a security blanket for anybody. This is just one measure that we utilize to try to help, but the best thing is social distancing and staying home.
Yeah, thank you, Doctor Martha Martinez, and going back to the actual question on the table, and that's again, if you leave the home, Dr. Trevino, my understanding is that you're saying your recommendation is you must wear a mask, then. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct, and I totally agree with Doctor Martinez also in regards to changing the mask and being aware that the mask can harbor bacteria or viruses. So it's a good idea to have another one when you come home, and that's a clean one, and the one that you used, put it to wash.
By mask, we're talking covering, right, face covering, it doesn't have to be a mask, it could be just any covering.
Yeah, yes, covering or mask, exactly.
Thank you.
What was the recommendation while exercising if you were members of your household?
Yes, that.
Okay, so just respond to the city attorney's verbal statement on the exceptions.
The first one again was when engaging in a permissible outside physical activity, such as running, jogging, walking.
I would. That would. Action of exercising outside with your family, because we don't know where the virus is lodged, we don't know what areas, we don't know exactly totally how the virus is disseminated. But we do know that it is because of person-to-person contact. But there's other ways that the virus might be disseminating that we don't know. And when there's rain droplets or water accumulation in the cars or any humidity that stayed on the surface, why can't the virus be there? And if you're with your family outside, you inhale it, or you come in contact while jogging, potentially if you don't have a mask, you can, you can get contaminated, so. These are things that we're maybe going a little bit beyond, that it's better to do overdo it than underdo it. That's my opinion.
Okay, thank you. The next exception?
When riding in a personal vehicle.
Riding in a personal vehicle?
If you're by yourself, you're by yourself, you're not contaminating anybody, nobody's contaminated. Low probability.
Okay, but if you're running with another person in the car?
I would suggest that you put on your mask. Mayor, if you're alone in the car.
Would that be a recommendation or would that be an order?
That's my opinion.
Okay. Okay, he can come back, I guess, in riding.
When alone in a separate single space. When you're alone in a separate single space.
It depends how far you are from other people, if you're, there's people around and they come in and out of your personal space, well, it tends to be better to use it. So if you're in a public area and you're by yourself, like in an area where there's nobody around and all of a sudden there's two or three people around you like in a bus stop, it's a better idea to keep the mask on, even if there's nobody around. We need to go across the board, because a lot of exceptions will make the rule or the ordinance or the idea of what we're trying to do invalid because of the multiple exceptions, so we need to be a little bit stricter.
Okay, go ahead, Miss Helle.
And for consumption purposes?
Yes. For consumption purposes, when you're eating, obviously you can't have a mask.
Yes, obviously you have to put it aside or remove it, and then immediately put it back after you finish eating.
And the last one is again another one that we'll keep in, it's for any other case of a health and safety emergency, or any other health and safety.
For emergencies, of course, logically, you have to take it off for any breathing, asthma, or anything that comes along, you would have to take it off.
So in essence, I guess maybe.
And it would be for anybody five and younger.
Anybody one?
Five and younger, under the age of five.
Yes, anybody under the age of five?
Yes, I do recommend for children to wear it, it's going to be difficult, but children also should wear it as long as their parents can help them keep it on and train them to keep it on.
Okay, so in essence, yeah, Doctor, maybe you need to work with our legal, Miss Helle here, and the city manager, and and propose, based on what you've heard, city council members, do you have any objections or concerns or doubts?
Mr. Mayor, may I be heard?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, council member Ogget, yes, go ahead, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I'm just kind of trying to think this all the way through. The placing of a face cover on a young child with a relatively young immune system, that seems to make good sense, you know, kids being kids, you know, good luck with that, but all we can do is try, right, at this timeframe. And that does beg the issue of daycares, you know, we still, I know we still have some essential personnel that have no choice, they have to make use of childcare. But I know that the daycares are struggling, and I know a lot of these daycare providers are struggling with this issue of masks, that's an aside. Going back to the traveling in a car, I mean, if you're with your family unit, it would seem that you all have already eaten so much in the same space anyway, in your own home. Traveling, which you shouldn't be doing, I mean, ideally you'd be sending out one person, you know, to the HEB or one person to the pharmacy, but if you must travel, if it's, if everyone, if all the occupants of the vehicle are from the same family unit, then why mask up? That's my question. And then, I'm not quite understanding the masking while you're inside your own home, because as I understand it, you know, we wear the mask when we go out, so we keep our droplets to ourselves. We're not wearing the mask to protect us, we're wearing the mask to protect others from what we may be carrying, God forbid. And so if we're in our own homes, it would make sense to be breathing regularly, breathing air, not through something that you've had on your face all day long, because I, and ask the doctors in the room, that might be problematic as well, and so you've got some risk analysis that needs to be done. But what I'm trying to say is, it sounds like our city manager and our emergency operation group have put together a, some medical advisors, and why not take this issue to a panel of doctors that represent a cross-section of the city? And let's get a little wider, a little broader spectrum of opinions on what we should do before we make a hasty decision as to cars and exercising. On the kiddos, I get it, if you're gonna be exercising in a highly trafficked area, you know, maybe that makes sense too, I don't know, I'm just, you know, sharing my thoughts with y'all.
Mark, I make a comment?
Yes, go ahead.
Would you consider calling a meeting and inviting these health professionals along with our health director and Dr. Trevino and Hepsosar, I guess, maybe in another meeting? That and other concerns, and, you know, bring all the information that council needs to hear. Maybe inviting them if they could be here, but I'd also like to include our tuberculosis contracted doctor, Dr. Wender Vasquez, if he could assist us because of the issues we've been seeing or possible cases where that may be an issue, and also bringing to the table Dr. Garza Longora, who works with the fire department, so we can also see the impacts, you know, of this pandemic in our first responders, and bring them together where Dr. Trevino, as our health authority, would lead us in informing council what's occurring, why he's making these recommendations, if there's anything else he'd like to inform us, or any other recommendations he has. And maybe having a meeting hopefully tomorrow, if council wishes to start hearing all this and start moving, time is of the essence, and we just can't, you know, push it too far to where, you know, it may be too late. So I think that if we can do this hopefully tomorrow, and as mayor, if you think it's substantial to call a meeting, why not, you know, let's get it done.
Yes, this is. Yeah, I kind of like that thought, but it's a, oh, okay, yeah, let's hear from my council member, Bali, go ahead.
Mayor, you know, I agree with the idea that, yeah, you may have one person in the home, they're coming in and going out. You have that one person, but in the end, I mean, everybody's sharing the same toilet, they're sharing the same sinks, they're sharing the same kitchen. You know, there's only so much you can do, and intruding into people's homes and telling people to wear a mask, when one, we know we can't enforce that. It, I think oversteps our bounds as a council, and it doesn't, and it doesn't really make make sense to be wearing a mask when you're, when so many other things in the home are shared. And the same thing with the automobile, you know, you have your family unit, you're together in a car, you're together in the house, I think that goes too far, as far as people running in groups, I think that that is something that we should address, and I thought we already had addressed that exercise is really supposed to be solo or with your, with your family unit and not in other groups, so that people could be able to run or cycle without the necessity of a mask. And so I know the doctor said he's seen some problems, he's seen some areas, I haven't seen those, I don't know where that's happening, but if it is happening, you know, it certainly does need to be addressed.
Thank you, yes, council member Dilma?
I agree with council member Bali regarding the members of the household, if we're being too restrictive. And I would like to see if our legal department can also research that, we've been, at least I've done some messaging, whether or not it's constitutional, these restrictions that we're placing with the mask and with the fine. And so if we can have some clarification on that and make sure that we don't go into also the constitutionality privacy, whether it's in the car or the household, that we don't.
I can argue to you, we can pass anything for public health, but as long as it's the least restrictive to achieve the means that we're trying to achieve, so, again, it has to be reasonable and make sense and be the least restrictive enforcement that we're putting out there. It's just a balance, and that would be up to, I guess, our health authority and this council to determine if that's in fact the least restrictive thing that needs to be done.
Council member Mark Martinez, go ahead.
Also like to see human resources in our city management limit the amount of people that come in to these offices and other of the city of Laredo offices. I know that your third floor gets a lot of people that have a lot of business to do, and people are coming and going, I mean, us, we go upstairs, and you all might be going home and coming to work, and limiting your trips to the grocery stores, et cetera, but then one of us or somebody that has business with city shows up, and we might have, we might not be taking it as seriously as you all, and are potentially exposing our city staff and personnel, so I'd like for you all to seriously consider limiting the amount of people that actually show up to our first, second, and third floors in this building and in all of the other buildings that we have. I think a phone call goes a long way, and you can do a lot of business with emails and texting and phone calls, and not necessarily have that person-to-person contact.
So I haven't heard what we've heard, Mr. City Manager, do you wanna get together with the doctors and kind of formulate how best to address this, and maybe a way of recommendations versus you know, orders, that Dr. Trevino feels that it must be ordered, obviously he's the authority. He feels that he needs to consult with others in the community by all means as well. But obviously, Dr. Trevino and Dr. Gonzalez, you know, calling the shots here, Dr. Trevino in particular, since he is the medical authority for the city, so we respect his opinion. And maybe in the morning, kind of, you know, organize his forums, and then maybe shoot us an email or something to council to see if we could call a meeting, if not tomorrow, maybe the next day, first thing or whatever. So we can digest it as well and be prepared then.
So, yeah, we'll provide as much support as we can to our health authorities. Dr. Trevino, I would ask to have him continue to be lead, obviously, I'm not at all close to being anything close to clinical in relation to what I do, but what I can offer is any sort of support to be able to gather these individuals together, whether it be through a webex session, that we can get names inputted and cameras on people. And all I can do is suggest and urge our medical authority to please provide whatever necessary commentary, whatever necessary guidance he needs to, where it is much further and openness that he needs to convey the message to this council. Because at the end of the day, we do need to hear what we need to hear, and if he needs any sort of assistance to get further input from other stakeholders, from other doctors from the community, please, you know, let me know and I'll support that effort in however I can, so that this council can get the best decision-making from our health authority, Dr. Trevino.
Ultimately, Dr. Trevino does have the authority, he feels that time is of the essence, and maybe it's a little forward. I would suggest he needs to do what he needs to do, but if there's, there's some measure of time where we can incorporate these other thoughts and ideas that we discussed, by all means as well.
May I be recognized briefly?
Yes, go ahead, sir.
I think we need to stop passing the buck on to management, and Dr. Trevino needs to, and maybe Mrs. Helle could help us address this, the authority, I think, that Dr. Trevino has needs to be made very clear, Mrs. Helle, and the power he has as an official of this city, as a health authority, especially now, is very crucial, and Dr. Trevino needs to take the lead on this, and we appreciate the support from management, the support they're offering, but I think it's gotten to a point where council, with the lead of the mayor, and with Dr. Trevino at the forefront of this situation, guide us and lead us into what needs to be done, I think management has done what they can. um guide us and, and lead us into what needs to be done. I think management has done what they can from a managerial CEO point of view, but at this point, I think Doctor Trevino needs to lead us and telling us, these, th- these are the numbers, this is what I foresee will occur. These are the measures that I would consider mayor and council take. And mayor, you as, a- as our mayor, along with him, take this through and we meet as soon as possible and we don't wait and we call these physicians that are already on contract with the city through different avenues to the table, with that contractual obligation that they have. And that they, through Doctor Trevino's leadership, deliver the information they think is essential to be delivered to this council and mayor.
Okay, Doctor Trevino, you, you, you've heard the statements here. You're the authority here for us, so uh, I realize time is of the essence, uh, for, you know, for everyone. Uh, most of you, since you're the man with the authority, uh. So you, you lead us, uh, if, if you think, uh, uh jotting down basically what, what you want and then and then expressing that either by email or, or outright, uh. Uh, now please let us know, uh, and, and we can convene, uh or, or have a, I don't know, eh, an emergency meeting, uh, you know, as soon as possible, uh. So, uh, you're, you're basically, if you need uh, uh, some other, uh you know, consulting with other experts or whatever, you know, obviously, that, that's your call, uh. And, and we're not suggesting that you should, but, but if you if you that that's, that's appropriate and from your situation, by all means as well. In essence, you tell us, uh, and, uh, and we'll, we'll certainly be there.
Yeah, yes, mayor, uh. I just want to add a last comment. The next two weeks are going to be the pro harder situation of the whole United States. That includes us. So we don't have much time to be, uh, to be, uh, nitpicking at this. My mess- my message is very strong. And that is my opinion. And, uh, the comment that why should people be in the car and the whole family and not use the mask? And, uh, it's, it's like being at home. It's not because the car is going somewhere else. It'll park in an area, the doors are open. And if somebody has the virus, it'll, it'll go out and if there's people next, another car, it'll contaminate them. This virus is very, very contagious. We need to get a strong message and, and realize that we don't have time because other places did not take opportunity of the time. And this is what they are. I think we're doing a very good job here in Laredo. But let's continue to do it and let's not uh dwindle on little details. I mean, it could go to legal if you want, that's not a problem. But we already said that the home is just a recommendation inside the home. But in a car, you're already outside, you're in a public area, you park in the parking lot, there's people around you, you open the doors. There's no mask for the people that have, that were inside that car. There's six peoples of a family member group. And you disseminate the virus. That's why my medical opinion is what it is.
Yeah, may I be heard after Ms. Ilma, please? Hold on, uh, uh, because I have to move here, Monsieur. Yeah, my, uh, mic is not working here. Yes, go ahead. Ms. Ilma is gonna go first. Let's go ahead then. Yeah, you want, yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
Yeah, my mic's off. Yeah, for some reason the mics aren't working. Oh, my, yeah. I was. Very froze. Yeah, it froze. It's a frozen. I think it's the RT guy. Anybody here to stare? Uh, they heard that? They heard that. I think what you do, TSA. People that are disheartened, their gloves and their masks in the streets.
That's what I was gonna.
Oh, that's my next counsel. This way, Chris, you're not seeing that, you're not doing that, like that?
It's here?
Yes. I got something similar to it and we can add that to the. And, yeah, I wanted to add the school district. We didn't send out flyers to them. The parking lots, they didn't have, you know, there are thousands, I think there are a dozen. And then another country that we were there was pulling doors, you don't have access to them. And so. But that will change the method. And this. You know, I'm research. Yeah, it's, it might not work, you have to. No, that's, you know, totally okay. I don't think it might especially anybody. I don't know, I mean, the most important thing is that it's harder, that's not. I'm gonna tell me to open my radio app and that's. Is it okay if, if, if he comes to your over and he's sat in my center and go? That's fine. Well, if it doesn't have a house and. Oh, I think the council also needs to be arrested, but it's hard and it's hard to know. Okay, now he's moving, I think. That we know. No, no, the way he was coming to, he's moving. But where is that coming to?
But where?
Hold on, hold on.
Okay. Oh, Rebecca.
Uh, we're.
Are we on now?
It says on mute.
Mine is on mute now.
Okay, mine, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, it's coming back.
Uh, I was gonna mention as Doctor Trevino is considering that th- these other measures. Also, any recommendations regarding the, the what we're seeing about the debris with, with people uh leaving the, the gloves everywhere in the parking lots and things like that. Uh, any of that needs to be a consideration for the spreading of that, John. Thank you.
Doctor Trevino, yeah, would you respond to uh council member Ilma's uh, uh, comment or, or request?
Yeah, I'm sorry, we were having trouble, we're back on. If the question can be repeated again, council member Ilma.
Doctor Trevino, I was asking that as you are making this further recommendations, if we could, uh, have you look into the issue of all the additional gloves and, and I guess protective uh, uh trash that people are leaving in all the uh parking lots and, and what the city should do regarding that, uh, so that we can have a stronger uh sense of enforcement.
The gloves, the gloves are part of the general recommendation. People can have a sanitizer in their car before they get out of the car. We're talking about the mask right now and the, the issue about uh that home having a mask, people having masks, it was a recommendation, oh. But the outside, I do strongly suggest that we put uh in order that people have to wear a mask outside, even when they're in a car, the whole family's in a car. Except when you're by yourself. When the whole family's in a car and they have no mask, when they go into an area where, where there's a parking lot, there's people around. You open the doors and the virus comes out if people are contaminated and they don't know. So that's why my recommendation is to get the mask in the car. If there's several people, it doesn't matter if it's a, it's a family member because you're not, you're outside your home. And you might argue, you're inside your car, it's the same thing. It's not because you open the door and if you're positive or you have the virus with you, you'll contaminate other people that are around you. This virus is very, very contagious.
Mayor, will, 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 what are the exceptions if you don't?
Yeah, but he, Doctor, basically, he needs the authority. I mean, that's what he's, what he's telling us, uh, and he's, he's a man, uh. I mean, just, just go to us about it, uh. Either we can, uh, that if something happens, uh. How about? Well. Can you, you want, Doctor, if you can hear us?
Yeah, I know this thing pops again.
I think the public is listening. Now, he's here, the authority. Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment, once we come back online.
Yeah, but, and, and I get it, but.
He says there's no time.
But he needs to be reassured of the authority he has, is what I'm saying.
I think he's, he's showing this.
Well. So where, where is it gonna be, Mayor?
Oh, my cell.
Man?
I killed her.
Yeah, the mic's wrong. Mayor, there?
If we can't communicate, then, yeah, that's okay.
Mine is.
Cause he should have been here. I don't understand why everybody's in the separate room.
The doctor's been on the phone, yes.
Yeah, he's here. He should be here talking to us.
Yeah.
What's the name? Yeah, it's, it's working now. I know.
This is a pretty bad welcoming party celebrity, like he became the city manager and.
Council, we, we've been having technical audio, uh. Hello?
All now?
So, council member, uh, we're. Uh, this is just a comment, just for the, for the general public, man.
But the doctor Gonzalez and that career of the.
Yeah, stand the way down. I'll just, it's just a quick comment, just in general to the public and this is just letting you guys know that. You know, we as a city are trying our best and I want to appreciate, I want to thank all public entities that are coming together with, uh, along with the city. Uh, for, for two senses, it's, uh, it's, it's a difficult situation to be in, but understand that rules and regulations that, that we probably recommend it for you guys to do, everything will be, will be much. You know, we're here for you. It's not time to make fun of each other. Um, you know, and, and show that, uh, Laredo is strong as a whole. Uh, we're not, we're no individuals up here, up here, we do it together, we do it as. You guys are important to us. I just want you to know that. Thank you, council member Gonzalez. We're waiting on both, uh, doctors, uh, Trevino and Gonzalez to to come down and, and keep their social visits.
Mayor, there?
Council member Bali, can you hear us?
Yes, Mayor. Based on.
Council member Ogget, can you hear us?
Yes, sir, I sure can.
Thank you. My mic's not working, but.
Okay, we're having audio, uh, issues here, uh. So we're bringing both doctors to the, uh, council chambers, uh. So, I'm here with them.
Mayor, may I?
Yes, go ahead.
I, I'd like to make a motion based on Doctor Trevino's, uh, last statements that, that, um masks be, uh, worn, that we require that masks be worn, uh, inside the, uh, an automobile. And.
Hold on, I think that, yeah, hold on.
Hold on, I don't remember that.
There we, we said? Okay, bye. Thank you. And I mean. Well, Doctor Trevino now with us in, uh, council chambers, uh. Doctor Trevino, no, specifically, you're basically saying, uh, and it's basically an order, uh, you're ordering, uh the citizens of Laredo to, uh, when they exit their home, that they should be wearing masks, whether in a car or, or irrespective. If you're outside the home, you should be wearing a mask, a cloth, a sort of barrier, uh, a cover over your nose and mouth. Is that correct?
That is correct. And the reason we say that, we're basing ourselves on medical evidence and how the trend is going. Uh, four hun- five hundred and ninety-six people have been tested. And twenty-two percent are positive. So that's all the tests we have up to now. And if we apply this to the population of Laredo, fifty-seven thousand two hundred people could potentially positive. So that's mind-boggling. We, we can't even imagine that. That's happening to the rest of the cities. Twenty-two percent that are positive up to now, of all the tests we've done. So, and the trend has been going up since, uh, middle of March. The tests were positive for thirteen percent, fourteen percent, sixteen percent. And now it's up to twenty-two percent. And it doesn't matter how many tests are being done, that's of the positives. So we're looking at this thing going up, the curve is going up. And we're not at the same curve as, as the rest of the country. So everybody has their peak. So are we waiting for that big peak to come up or are we gonna do something about it? So we have to do measures that are a little bit harsh and difficult. Just like in the beginning when we said about the masks. This was a difficult decision, but and it was difficult for the public to accept it, though we did accept it. And it helped us. So like all the preventing measures have helped us also. If we do this extra step, we're not doing, the worst thing that can happen is nothing bad. Now, we don't do more measures, the worst thing that can happen is the worst. So that's a logic behind it. That's based on all the years. I've got thirty-five years of practice in Laredo. I've seen what things are. And I'm saying things based on medical evidence and that's my opinion.
Yes, go ahead, Doctor Martha Martinez, please.
Hollywood.
Oh. Uh, well, is there any, I'll wait, yeah. Council member Bali, go ahead.
No, no, Mayor, I'm, I'm, I'm good. I already said what I needed to say. I, I made a motion and I don't need to be seconded, but that, that's all I had to say about, about that.
I, I think, you're just, hold on, in, in essence, your y- your motion is basically what the doctor is saying, that once you leave the house, you need to wear a mask and be in the car or just anywhere. Outside the house, you, uh, uh, every person is required to have a mask.
That's right, I'm sorry. That's right, Mayor.
Is that correct?
Yes, Mayor.
Is there a second on that motion? We can't. Oh, try that. Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, uh, council member Bali. We can't make motions. Apparently the agenda animus is very broad. We can discuss it. And we can listen to the doctor, um, but then, uh. President Doctor Trevino has the authority, uh, to, to make that order.
It's, it's a.
Doctor, that's, that's your order, that's your order.
Mayor, just so I can clarify that, um, as Mayor Portem was saying, on, um, section one twenty-one point oh two one of the Health and Safety Code, as well as eighty-five, the Administrative Code, says that he is the health authority that has been appointed by this council and asked that he's an officer of the state. And he has the authority to implement control measures in cases of emergencies such as these. So he doesn't necessarily have to act if he feels that he has to protect it.
Yeah, so this has it, I have absolutely good, wide power to, you know, to put this, uh, 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 Doctor. Yeah. And of course, I'll, I'll, yeah, Doctor Peter Martinez.
Okay, and Doctor Trevino, thank you, uh, for your leadership on this. Uh, I'm on, on, I'm muted. Um, thank you for your leadership, but I know that you and I have discussed, um, several of those issues because I think the head of, of the, uh, national, I think that's wonderful. I do want, however, to, um, uh, i- in case this gets reported incorrectly, I think it's very important that people understand. We don't, we do not think that fifty-seven thousand people are infected at this time, okay? Nor do we think that fifty-seven thousand is a, you know, a guarantee. We just think that based on certain projections, if nothing is done and we follow that same pattern, and that's just based on the number of positives that's come back through specific, through positives. And, and we also have to have the caveat that the people we've been testing have been within clusters of close proximity, right? And so that's going to naturally increase the, uh, number. But I do think it's important to. And so, that's going to naturally increase the, uh, number, but I do think it's important to recognize how quickly this can spiral out of control. If these measures aren't in place, but I don't want the public to, um, panic. I don't want the public to think that everybody has it. But these measures are necessary because if you don't put them in place, everyone will have it, and then our healthcare system will not be able to keep up with the demand. Of people that are sick with this virus, but for right now, I don't want the media reporting that fifty-seven thousand people have this virus. Or that we think fifty-seven thousand people are gonna have this virus in a week. Okay, this, this is not the case. These are projections that could potentially happen had none of these measures been taken, but we have taken many measures. From two to three weeks ago, that put us ahead of this curve. And so, I think that we will know in these next two weeks if this curve has been flattened. I think preliminary data tells us that we are actually starting to flatten the curve. Um, now, Texas is at that, that, that preliminary stage, but we were ahead of Texas. This city was ahead of Texas in our response, in isolations, and in testing. And so, I think it's very important that we don't alarm the public too much, but I think it's important that the public knows that it can spiral out of control had we not taken these measures. And so, I just wanna.
And one, one thing I did want to, uh, also add is that. Working with Dr. Gonzalez, he can provide the numbers on the projection curve. We need to, uh, uh, we'll do a model to see what's gonna happen in the next two weeks, what the rise is gonna be, and he has the numbers to do that.
And if I, if I may, mayor, and members of the council, the Gonzalez, the health department. Yes, there's several models, uh, like Mr. Martinez absolutely correct, like Trevino had mentioned that already once before. As a possible. It doesn't mean we will. And remember, that even, even if whatever number, um, because we still have tested very few. Uh, and most are, are not gonna get sick. But we wanna prevent that, that group that could get sick, and that's why these measures, you know, one of the other things is that. Again, our, our latest cases have all been twenty and thirty-year-old. So, where, where are they? They're, we still see them coming together, clustering, and that, that's what we wanna prevent. They're gonna be okay. It's them not spreading it to the vulnerable. To those that have those underlying conditions, and so. But we'll, we'll, we already are analyzing and having projections, and we've got, uh, Dr. Elise also has another model. Uh, and so, we, several models can predict different numbers. Bottom line is, we still have too few. Uh, and so, we, we, we're, we're doing that. We're analyzing that. Um, the main thing is, is for us to take these preventive measures, make sure that people don't, um. That's very encouraging.
I'd like to, uh, both doctors, uh, just go ahead, Mayor Portem.
Mayor, but, but at the same time, it was, I, I honestly respect the opinion of my colleague, Dr. Martinez, who is a great doctor and a health director as well, but we can't deviate from the opinion of our health authority, and I. Can't express, and I get tired of saying this, if, if he's saying one thing, we need to abide by it. He is our health authority. There's no disputing or comparing the facts. If he is delivering a message to us, I think it's our obligation. I will not be part. Of a group that tries to deviate from our health authority. What he says goes, and we need to understand that. We need to understand that whether our health authority is telling us is what we need to respect as a council. And like you said, he has the authority to do what he has to do, and I hope that you don't refrain Dr. Trevino from doing so by any type of influence. But we need to do what we have to do, and I respect Dr. Martha Martinez, who brings a wealth of knowledge to, to this, and, um, our health director as well. But I think that we need to stand by what our health authority is telling.
I, I don't think anybody's saying that we don't do that. I just don't want the media to report that fifty-seven thousand.
That's his job. That's his job to verify and, and bring the message.
And, and I think that if you look at the projection that he put out, it's just one projection. When you look at projections throughout the state, there's multiple projections. Stating that fact is not disregarding what, what, what our health director is saying, it, or our health authority is saying, it's simply, simply making sure that we don't alarm the public so much. That everybody's fearful. That, that, that's, that's not, that's not, but that's not our call, and that's not what he, okay?
And I, I want to, we'll take it, uh, maybe twenty-two, well, twenty-one.
It's not working because you need to understand something. He said probable, councilmember doctors, he said probable. I wasn't speaking to him. I was speaking to, I was speaking to the city that's listening to the media that says. I get it, so no, it's deviating from us, but we're just, any chance? But, yeah, ultimately, it's not a true.
Yes, actually, uh, what they're reiterating what Dr. Martinez said. It's a probable, it's a model. It's, it's not a fact. This is just a, a possibility, probability, and model. And if we do the right things, hopefully, we won't get to that model. Thank you, doctor. Anyone else here that's a councilmember? Martinez?
Yeah. Um, that, uh, Dr. Gonzalez, Dr. Trevino, and, and. Based on what I've read and, and what I have seen, uh, there is testing, testing, testing. And, uh, what's, what are the delays in, in getting more people tested? I mean, I think there's, there's people that think they might, and I don't know, and they wanted to get tested and everything, um. What, what, why, why isn't there enough tests?
The delay is that there's not, not enough tests, or the first batch that we got did not pan out. Uh, they were not valid, and Dr. Gonzalez made tests to confirm that they were not valid, so.
So, it's not as simple as a swab, put it in a sealed area and send it on?
Yeah, but that, that is taking up to two weeks at this point, because they have thousands of tests. By that method, it takes two weeks, at least two weeks, and then much more because more tests are gonna be done.
So, what are the type of tests that you need for, for fast?
Uh, the, the, councilman, uh, and mayor. The issue is nationwide, there's not enough tests, and remember, this is a novel virus, you know? There was no test, and initially, only the Centers for Disease Control were the one who created the initial test. Now, the public health system is testing, but they're limited. Private labs are being added every day, uh, in their capacity, and new tests are being looked at. Uh, in Laredo, we have three labs, three private labs, and us, who are actually running the, the test. Many physicians, many clinics taking the sample. Two steps, go in the nasal swab, there's some, some projected, uh, rapid tests that fail. And none of those right now have produced, uh, uh, and anything reliable. So, we have to stick to the nasal swab, and there's limited, so this is why right now, uh, we're concentrating on those who are sick, uh, and wanna start testing. If, if the newest, uh, lab, Abbott Lab, is approved for a rapid PCR confirmatory, then there will be a new test around the corner. In the meantime, right now, um, the public health system is saying, if more tests aren't done. If they're not available, then we're gonna have to consider now that this next phase presumptive. If I'm positive. Uh, my family member who starts having symptoms, no need to test you, you're presumptive. We're not there yet. We're not there yet. I'm saying, that's where we may be heading if more tests are, uh, are developed and approved. We at the health department, through your approval and the city manager, we've been really in a purchasing agent to look at different needs to obtain PPE and testing. Uh, we did purchase, uh, we said it earlier today in, in the press conference, we, we did purchase a new machine, a new PCR equipment. The reagents, the test kits, one thousand. We said it here earlier. We have to do some controls on this, and will we test a thousand people? Automatically, fifty to a hundred, we're gonna use in control. We have even that, we've got to test. But, but we've got no tests. Uh, as soon as we receive the entire. And because of the backlog, the problem testing, even when you have tests. Uh, we've been receiving parts of it over the last two weeks. First, we received the reagents. And, and that has nothing to do with our purchasing. It's the lab capacity of the people to roll this out. Then we got the machine. That machine was missing a filter. Now, we're missing the last glass case to run the actual test. They told us, hopefully, we'll get it next week. In the meantime, we're testing. From us, we send to San Antonio. Uh, others privately are sending them to Quest, uh, LabCorp, or CPL, Bonify, Bonify Labs, we know what they're doing. But the testing capacity is, is limited.
And I've got several. Be- because we're a, a, uh, import-export community. There are several, uh, I've done several phone calls from individual, uh, either a hintis, other Nalys, or US Customs Brokers. Where they've got masks and gloves. Who do they talk to? Uh, for the viewing public, if they've got a supplier of this, who do they call?
Uh, the, the city, and we're going, we're centralizing everything through, through us and a, a purchasing agent. Uh, to, to purchase. As far as with the hospitals, today, they informed us that they did get some PPE. And, um, through the hospital preparedness program, to, uh, the, the Department of Emergency Management, the Governor's Department of Emergency Management. We also brought some equipment two weeks ago, and they brought more. The hospitals did get some masks, the main ninety-five PPE. The hospitals did get them. The emergency responders did get some. And so, more and more, some of the emergency stockpile that's at the state level and federal, will also be requested. And, and we're receiving it. It's adding up. Because now the private physician team are, are also needing additional. And the city again has made every effort to purchase large amounts so we can share PPE with the private sector, because we make them seeing patients as well, too.
And for the benefit of the viewing public, we're all wearing these masks. These are good for one day, two days, a week, whoa.
In, in, like Dr. Martinez said, and Dr. Trevino also said, it, the way you really, they're only good for one day. You don't have it, so, yes, persons coming in with the essential workers that's outside. Coming in, change the mask, uh, we're telling healthcare providers al- also that they can sanitize and reuse it. And the minute it becomes damaged or to soil, then, yeah, you gotta dispose it. But the best practices, the mask, you only use it once, then get a new one.
Yes, and I do at the hospital, every time we see a patient, we change gloves and mask and go. Every time we see a different patient, so. No, correct. Okay, Mr. Yeremy, yes, so councilmember, uh, mayor.
Yes, uh, I was wondering as far as the labs, uh, the one that the county has, the OJ Hill, uh, crime lab. Is there anything there that could help to collaborate in the testing or nothing? Okay, all right, and also, uh, Dr. Trevino, as you are, uh, looking at this further recommendations on, on the emergency order. I would like you to consider, uh, the issue of the later in of the gloves and the masks. We see a lot of the, um, parking lots, all of that, and that's gonna be another way of propagating the virus, so I don't know if something of, you know, enforcement needs to be a little bit hyped up.
I think that would have to be educational to the public. And, uh, just letting them know that, uh, this is not acceptable, just like we're educating, we use a mask, we can educate them to dispose of it. Correctly.
Today. Anything else? We need to move on, I believe, unless, uh, there's something else. Uh, so, doctor, I guess we'll be hearing from you.
Dr. Trevino, thank you very much as, as our health authority and our only health authority. I greatly appreciate it.
No? No, I think he's, he's spoken, and he's, he's got the authority, and, and, uh, and he moves forward. Yes, uh. Okay, moving on to, uh. Item one number? Okay, item fifty-three, go ahead. Yes, access item fifty-four, please go ahead.
Hi.
Yes.
For item number fifty-four, is discussable, is discussion, so we'll ask. To consider a seventh extension, uh, for injury legal pay.
Yeah, hold on, please, uh, uh, yeah, we need to mute our mics, please, and that's so, and a lady can speak. Mute mics. Thank you. Yes, go ahead now.
Okay, so hopefully, everybody can hear me. Extension, uh, request of an extension of injury legal pay in accordance with one four three point zero seven eight. The Texas Public Government Code for Patrol Officers and Social Aid Systems. Number of days out as of March twenty-one, twenty twenty, pay period is four hundred and seventy-six days. Human Resources and Police Departments do not recommend the extension. Um, um, the Human Resources Department and the Police Department do not recommend the extension because there were some. Things that this officer did not comply with, however, uh, he does have medical documentation supporting his reasons to be out. So, we ask council for whatever recommendation they may have to give him or not grant him these, uh, this extension.
Yeah, thank you. What is, uh, council's desire? I'm the, the city manager, I guess you, you. There's no recommendation from the city man, from the, from the officer. Yeah, we're having audio difficulty, so, so, please bear with us. I can unmute. Dr. Trevino, is there, uh, any information you need to provide on this before we give a recommendation?
Dr. Trevino, can you respond to, uh, the city manager's question?
Yes, sir, good evening, your council, Dr. Trevino, Chief of Presidential Record. Uh, we've been meeting with, uh, with HR with regards to this officer. You see, this is the seventh extension, uh, on this issue. I don't have the, the documentation, I, I'm not privy to the medical documentation, but I do support the, the, uh, the recommendation from HR who has been able to view. We do have issues with this officer that, uh, continuously pushes back appointments, continuously, um. Purposely misses appointments and, and doesn't give regard to, to following medical recommendations and such. So, again, in meeting with, uh, with HR, meeting with legal, this being the seventh request, uh, for an extension. I do not support that, I mean, uh, people with HR do not support this recommendation, uh, this, uh, request.
Thank you, too. Uh, what is, is there a motion, uh, council?
Uh, mayor, come in.
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to hear from legal, uh, regarding, uh, at this time with the federal changes for, uh, FMLA and all this during the, uh, coronavirus. Is there anything that would affect this recommendation? With the care.
The, the Emergency Act that you're referring to has to do with, um, specific, uh, guidelines having to do with COVID-related injuries, and to my knowledge, this is. The, the leave has nothing to do with, with the virus, so I don't see how that would be applied. And I believe HR has looked into it as well, as far as, um, whether or not any of these exceptions would apply.
Okay, I'll do a familiar thing. In this case, it wouldn't.
Any other comment, uh?
Yes, sir, mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, in this case, it wouldn't.
What happens if we do not, uh. Give that seventh extension?
Um, the.
Do they still stay out, or, or to the benefit cease?
Would be on legal, or without pay? He would be on legal, without pay.
Yeah, uh, go ahead, Ms. Elena.
Um, the option would be on legal, without pay.
Or come back, come back, come back. Or come back to work, is it? Yes, HR, uh, well, come back to work, is that the other option?
Not necessarily, because at this time, he still has a, a medical documentation, um, keeping him out, and so. I apologize, I was in the rush for just a second, but, and so, I'm not sure exactly what was said, but the main thing, um, to note is that. Out through April thirtieth, but just without pay. And so, um, from one perspective, he does have.
And so, um, from one perspective, he does have medical documentation keeping him out from, uh, for, until April thirtieth. But at the same time, and I caught just the very tail end of what Chief Trevino said. Um, because there were certain requirements that were not met during a period of time, that is the reason for, um, Human Resources, and of course, he being not supporting. Of course, this is ultimately your decision, we'll abide by, um, whatever it is that the council decides.
Yes, go ahead.
So, we, we're saying it's leave without pay, but I'm reading this, and it says, extension of an injury leave with pay, in accordance, one forty-three.
That's, that's correct. If you, if this council decides, so the request on, on the agenda item is a request to have leave with paid, with paid. Staff is not recommendation for that to happen. So if you all take the recommendation to not grant leave with pay, then he will then be on leave without pay. So staff is recommending to not extend, uh, having him on paid leave. If you decide to accept that recommendation, that would mean that he would, uh, this individual would be, uh, on leave but unpaid. Well, I don't think we're allowed, I don't think we're able to discuss. Wait, wait, Mayor, real quick? Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Trevino.
Uh, basically going for four hundred and seventy-six days. Uh, that's apparently the issue, uh, we don't know, uh, the extent of his injuries, we will find out the extent of his injuries. But based on the recommendation, what the chief is saying, and what, uh, HR is saying, that he has the, he hasn't measured in protocols or procedures to go about it, so the recommendation, uh, the recommended termination, or termination of the injury leave. Okay, real quick, let's look at this one. How much, if we were to extend it or approve it, how many days is it?
So if it was, if you were to approve, it would be forty-nine workdays. Until April thirtieth, and that would give you a total, uh, um, for April thirtieth of five hundred and five days. However, Councilmember, um, unable to thirty, this officer is, would not be released. And therefore, we would probably have to come back to you all for an additional extension, because this is not, this is not gonna be the end of it.
Okay, okay, come on. Can we modify it at least to say, give him, uh,
Week?
Two weeks, so he could comply with the paperwork, proper paperwork? Uh, and at that point, if he doesn't comply, then it's leave without pay? Or come back the next council week?
Um, uh, the, the requirements aren't actual paperwork, there were, uh, um, other things that needed to have been complied with that were not, it's not a paperwork issue. It was recommendations from his provider that he didn't follow.
Uh, legal, can we go into executive session for personal matters? Personal issue, a motion to go into executive session?
Okay, there's a motion to go into executive session to discuss this.
Five thirty-one, based on personnel. Five five one point zero seven four.
Okay, that's a motion in executive day. Councilmember Burke Martinez, uh. And HR, yes. Okay, any, uh, y'all those in pairs here?
Aye.
Any opposed? Don't include Chief Trevino as well, yes. Uh, yes, uh, I was in favor again. By sign, and, and those again, by sign. The ayes have it, uh, motion carries. We're going into executive session on this side. Thank you.